And thank you for joining us. As we get started today, we'll follow the agenda as best we can. We may have to move a couple of things out of order to accommodate folks arriving as they do. I would like to invite, we have Mayor Overston from Taylorsville with us. We welcome you to say a few words. Okay. Perfect, so we'll go ahead and wait for Mayor Wilson and then give you that opportunity. So in the meantime, I'll go ahead and give you my redistricting spiel. And let me make sure I have my notes so I don't. I've done this 13 times, you'd think I'd have it all memorized by now. But there are a couple of numbers that I have not memorized. I know my colleague, Commissioner Hilliard, has memorized all of the deviation standards. But those have been a little less for me. So the commission was created out of an initiative that was in 2018. And after the initiative, there was a legislative compromise that resulted in Senate Bill 200 in 2020. As a result, we have a seven-member commission that is advisory to the legislature. Now, of our seven-member commission, three of the members were appointed by the Republican leadership in the legislature. Two of them were appointed as partisan appointees. And one of them was appointed as an independent. And so Commissioner Hilliard and Commissioner Bishop were the partisan appointees. And then Commissioner Baker was the independent appointee by the Republicans. Three were appointed by the Democratic leadership of the state legislature. And that's Commissioner Durham and Commissioner Hale were the partisan appointees. And then Commissioner Thorne was the independent appointee of the Democrats. And then I was appointed by Governor Cox. Our charge is to produce a set of maps for Congress, State Senate, State House, and State School Board that are representative of the people and their perspective and follow a set of criteria. And I'll review those criteria here momentarily. But just to give you some sense of where the commission has been, we were appointed in February. And normally, in a normal census year, the data for redistricting would be available in April. And we would have been able to start drawing our maps in April. And this year, because of the pandemic and other issues, the data was not released until mid-August. And so we started drawing our maps in late August. And we have been drawing maps on a regular basis since then. As we've been trying to create a set of maps that follow the set of principles that we have, but also are responsive to the public feedback that we've been receiving. We received literally thousands of comments and we're very appreciative of those. We've been trying to pay attention to those. And each week after our public hearings, we come back on Mondays. And our map drawing teams talk about the comments that we heard. We start tinkering with our maps again. And we'll still be doing that again this week, even though today, we're hoping that we'll be able to settle on a core set of maps that we can then further refine based on the comments that we receive. So we developed three map drawing teams. Each map drawing team was represented by somebody appointed by the Republicans and somebody appointed by the Democrats. And just for your reference, we happen to be sitting in those map drawing teams today. So Commissioner Hilliard and Commissioner Thorne were a map drawing team. Commissioner Hale and I, and then Commissioner Bishop, Commissioner Durham, and Commissioner Baker were a map drawing team. And so in each of those map drawing teams, one of the very positive things that we have seen is that we weren't focused on the task at hand and not focused on the politics. And I'll talk about that a little bit more as we walk through the criteria that we have. But we have a deadline looming. We will be presenting our maps to the legislature on November 1st. And so just over a week away. And so we're frantically in the process of writing a report. We're trying to settle on a set of maps here. And at the same time, making sure we're still listening to the comments that we have coming from the public. So let me walk through quickly. The set of criteria that we've been using is we've been thinking about drawing maps and drawing the districts of the state. The first criteria, and the one that no matter where you are in the country, is used by everybody, is equal population. Back in the 1960s, the Supreme Court ruled that there should be one person, one vote. And so everybody should have essentially equal representation. And so each of the districts has a target population, and we're trying to achieve that target population. Now, depending on the district, there is some room for some deviation from that target district that allows us to try and take into account some of the criteria that we have. For Congress, our target is 817,904. Now, with Congress, you'll note that several of the maps that we'll discuss later tonight have deviations approaching zero. And that's because at the congressional level, that has often been used as a target, especially in Utah. We have focused on trying to get that deviation that Congress down to approaching zero. Now, for the other districts, we have a little more variation in ability to use the deviations more fully. So for the state senate, our target is 112,814 people in each district. Now, we have an acceptable deviation of up to 5,000 people. Although, most of the maps that you'll hear and see have much smaller deviations than that. Because we still are trying to keep the districts as equal as practicable is the legal term that I have learned. That we're trying to do it as best we possibly can. And then the State House, we have a target of 43,622 with an acceptable maximum deviation of about 2,000. And again, we're trying to keep our deviations much below that. For the State School Board, our target is 218,108 with a deviation of just over 10,000 people as possible. But again, the maps that the commission has drawn have deviations much lower than that. But equal population is not the only criteria we have. And so we have to balance that criteria with a set of other criteria. For example, our districts have to be contiguous. So they have to be touching each other. So we can't, for example, say, we want to take a part of Harriman and put it with a part of Holliday. Because those two communities aren't connected. Now, we could put part of Harriman together with Riverton where they're connected. And so as long as they're connected, we can have that as a possible district. Another one of our criteria is reasonable compactness. So we don't want odd shapes of our district, except where those odd shapes can be explained by other criteria. And one of those other criteria is keeping cities and counties whole or minimizing the splits that we have to cities and counties. But you will note when you look at some of our maps that we have lines that do look kind of odd. And that is because, especially our municipal boundaries, in some cases, Taylorsville being an exception. It's a relatively straight-lined city. But many of our other cities, due to annexations and other things, have relatively irregular borders. And so when you see jagged lines that the commission has drawn, that's often because we've been following a municipal boundary. One of the other criteria that we have is new to Utah. Well, all of these are new to Utah because of the commission. But it's not only new to Utah, but it's relatively new across the country. It had been used before in a few places, but this go-around, there are a lot more places using communities of interest. And so we've been charged to preserve communities of interest. Now, a community of interest is a group of people in a contiguous geographic area that share common policy interests. Those could be based on their cultural background, their religious background, their social or economic areas. So it could be something like a neighborhood. It could be something like everybody goes shopping at the same place. It could be something like a softball league even. The challenge with the communities of interest is we don't know those inherently because there's not a database of communities of interest. And so we've had to be asking people across the state what their communities of interest are. And we've gotten over 1,000 submissions from the public on communities of interest to tell us what places they want to see kept whole. And the corollary to that is if we're going to divide someplace, try and not divide it in the middle of that community of interest, right? Try and divide it someplace else. But we've also been tasked with trying to pay attention to geographic boundaries. Things like highways, rivers, mountain ranges, where we can use those. Now, there are times when, as outsiders, we may look at a geographic boundary and we may think, oh, that makes perfect sense. But the community, one of the reasons we need your comment is the community may not necessarily see that boundary the same way. Now, in other places, when we were down in Provo, for example, they told us that I-15 is like a Great Wall or a mountain range almost to Provo. It seems like there are very separate communities on either side. Now, there might be other parts of the state where I-15 is not nearly so divisive across the community. And we need to know that. We need to know that if there's a river and we've used it as a boundary, if that doesn't make sense, let us know. One of the other criteria that we have is preserving the cords of prior districts. Now, the challenge in doing that is in Utah, it's almost odd for me to say this in a place like Harriman. We've seen explosive growth. And particularly here in the southwestern part of Salt Lake County, and also in the northwest part of Utah County, the growth has been explosive. And so what that has done is that has shifted the share of the state's population away from some places, like, for example, away from the northeastern part of Salt Lake City down towards the southwestern part of the county. And so what that does is that causes us that when we relook at the boundaries to achieve that 43,000 people, we can't use the exact same districts that existed before. We could start with one, but as soon as we start with the one and we have to take, say, another 10,000 people to add to that district, that means that we now have to take 10,000 people out of another district. You keep doing that, and before long, you don't have districts that look anything like the previous districts. And so while we're looking at that as one of our criteria, it's probably, in some ways, one of the more difficult ones to follow. One of the other criteria that we have is boundary agreement. Where possible, we want to have the ability to nest our boundaries. So that if somebody lives in a House district, all the people in that House district live in the same Senate district. Well, again, we have challenges with doing that, and part of that is a simple math problem. We have 75 House seats and 29 Senate seats. And they don't divide into each other even. And so as a result, we have, we'll have to be separating House districts from Senate seats to some extent. And we've looked at doing that for the school board where there are only 15 seats. But the school district boundaries don't mesh up nicely with the House district boundaries. And so even when we've tried to do that, this has probably been one of the criteria that we've probably done most poorly at, but not for fear of trying. The last criteria that I want to mention is that the commission has prohibited from the purposeful or undue favoring or disfavoring of an incumbent elected official, a candidate or prospective candidate, or a political party. And so as a result, we're not using political data in our map drawing. So we don't know where the incumbents are, is an example. So we don't have any idea if the districts we have drawn have potentially put two incumbents together. And now, that I'm sure will be analyzed. There will be lots of people that end up looking at that. But the maps that we have drawn have been drawn using those other criteria. And we believe those maps, together with the feedback that we've received, have resulted in a quality set of maps that don't take into account political information. So that gives you a broad sense of the criteria that we're using as we sit and draw maps together. A couple of other things I want to mention, we've tried to be very transparent. So the maps that we have drawn are available on our website. But all of our map drawing sessions, you can also go and watch those on YouTube. So we stream those live when we do them. You can go back and watch them, they're riveting. You'll see us sitting in a room for hours, deciding, do we go along fourth north or do we go along third west? But we wanted to be very transparent in this process and try to be engaging with the public. And that's been important to us and something that I think we've achieved very successfully. Are there any other issues that any of the commissioners would like to raise at this point? Yeah, our teams are nonpartisan. Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Hilliard?
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. I'm impressed. This is probably the biggest crowd we've had, so I appreciate that. Let me just add two things to what Chair Facher said. When we talk about contiguous, that seems pretty clear to you. But actually, with Harriman, we could go over the mountain into Twillie because the land hooks up with each other. And so it's kind of a strange thing. Harriman, I see, is 55,000, so they probably will have a House seat. The question is, what do we do with those in excess of 43,000? How do we draw the line? And that's one thing we need to hear from you. Do you want us to go north? Do you want us to go east? Maybe south around into Utah County? How would you like us to do that? The other thing I think is really interesting is, under federal law, a congressman does not have to live in his or her district. So if I live in Logan, if I wanted to run for District 4, I could run for District 4. I don't have to live in my district. So when you start looking at those lines where the incumbents live, they're important. I'm sure you want to run where you know the neighbors you have, but it's not. We've had history here in Utah, both Republicans and Democrats, who have run for congressional seats outside of where they lived. But with the House, Senate, that's both constitutional. And with the school board, it's statutory, you have to live in your district. So we have no idea where certain representatives out in this area live, where their homes are. We know, for example, they live out in this area, but we have no idea. And so if we draw a map down one street and they happen to live on the other side of the street, we've taken them out of the thing. I'd say the final thing is that, under Utah Constitution, maybe some question about it, but I think it's clear in statute. The legislature is given the charge to do redistricting. So we do recommendations, and hopefully they'll be impressive enough with what we've done, that the legislature will accept them. But there's no absolute requirement that they do have to accept them. You'll be able to follow that and make your own decision what you want to do about how people vote because they're all standing up for reelection, especially the House members who are up every two years. So you make your own decision there. But I would just add that on for clarification to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hilliard. At this point, we'd like to invite Mayor Wilson from Salt Lake County to share some remarks.
Well, thank you, and thank you mostly for all the time you're putting in. This is impressive, and I know the public really asked for you and for you to deliver with such a deep commitment and time. So appreciated. First thing I want to point out is I reached out to mayors in Salt Lake County to say, hey, do you all want to engage on this issue? Because we share some of the principles that you've shared, that dividing cities, multiple congressional districts in my county, which is a very large county in our state, of course, the largest, and its population is 1.183. So representing, you know, 35% of our state, we feel that more than a couple of congressional districts is disadvantageous to us. So reaching out, just with a quick, hey, can you guys, do you want to weigh in? We received a very large number of mayors, and I'm just going to tell you who was willing to sign on to this message, both to the legislature and of course to you as well. But Mayor Overston is here from Taylorsville. Dirk Burton, Wes Jordan, Rob Dolly-Holliday, Kelly Bush-Kerns, myself, of course, Robert Helm-Midville, Dan Canoe-Brighton, Aaron Mendonhal-Salt Lake City, Mike Peterson-Cottonwood Heights, Jeff Silvestri-Milcreet, Harris-Sundec-Alta, and Cherie Wood. So we'll be happy to give you a copy of this letter. But the central message is two districts, not more. We feel, I mean, take transportation, we rely so much on federal funding. And when our WASAT Regional Council has four congressmen and women, or three, it gets very tricky, and that's not the only issue, as you know. So with that, my team did some work and went through. And, you know, just in the interest of, it's kind of hard to round everyone up. I can't say that every mayor would agree with the conclusion we've come on the specific maps. But we favor Purple 4 primarily because it keeps Salt Lake County in two districts. And I'll leave you notes, Lisa. One of my Hartman, one of my associate deputy mayors is here and can leave you this information. But we, with that map, have a concern, and that is with Taylorsville. We think there's a way to keep Taylorsville whole and adjust, probably up in Davis County, to get to your goal of the appropriate and mission, really, on, you know, the wiggle more room you have with those counts. Orange 3 is, or sorry, yeah, sorry, yes. Orange 3 is not as preferable as 4, but it's more desirable than the main 2. That I think this is the one where the canyons have some issues for us left out. It is a kind of a challenge, especially with so many, so much connectivity between our canyon and our population.
Orange 3, not orange 3 dash 4.
Well, it's probably 3 dash 4.
So, yeah, now I'm not. Orange 3, okay. And we think there could be some revisions to that. And that would include the WASAT issue addressed Cottonwood Heights immigration. But there's some divisions between communities on that map. West Jordan Immigration, Cottonwood Heights, Alta. So anyway, and then obviously Maps 1 and 2 are not preferable. Now, suggested revisions to Purple 4 are, Draft 3, are keep the city of Taylorsville entirely in one district. And I'll let the mayor weigh in if she has an opinion on that, where they'd like to go. But we looked at it and thought maybe District 2. Move the unincorporated Salt Lake County Peninsula that is currently shown east of Sandy and Draper, near the southwest end of Little Cottonwood Canyon. From District 4 to 2, we believe this would result in a population deviation of approximately 166 people, or roughly 0.02%. And then also, the current draft shows a slight split of Murray and Cottonwood Heights parallel to Interstate 215 from approximately 300 east to Union Park. And we recommend the elimination of these splits and feel that districts should follow along municipal boundaries. And it does not appear that this should have a significant impact on the population deviation. And there are benefits, in the interest of time, I won't read through all of them, but primarily, we're looking for two districts, congressional districts. And again, I appreciate you, your work, and we're happy to leave this information with you. And I want to thank the public for engaging on this issue. I know, given the initiative, people care. We want a voice in this process. And I think your work will influence the legislature. I know many of you have some influence, all of you do with your current roles. And I appreciate your advocacy. And I apologize, after a run, I rarely am out because it's COVID, other than Zoom calls at night. But I do have another commitment right at 6:00. So came here first, and I'm going to go there last, and I know you all understand that. So my thanks to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a few questions?
Oh, sure.
Appreciate you coming here, Mayor Wilson. It's really a challenging thing to do, and trying to put these figures together. And we've had the advantage of spending probably 25 days, probably eight hours a day poring over these maps and looking at them and trying to figure out how to do it. One of the challenges you have in Salt Lake County is you do have more than 800,000. So Salt Lake County is going to be divided.
That's right.
I know I've had a number of people send me an email, don't divide Salt Lake County, keep us all together. And we, you know, we can't.
It'd be the largest congressional district in the nation. We'd be okay without.
Well, I don't know if you really want to do that, because I think it's something helpful. If you've got two congressmen, you can call and say, help, we need help.
Yeah.
The other problem is, is that, as you know, I think about 75% of our state lives in what we define as urban areas. And one thing that I have just looked at is if I start north of Weber County and go through Weber and Davis, and I have to go into a little bit of Salt Lake, not much, but a little bit of Salt Lake to get a district. Then if I start on the south end of Utah County and go north, I will end up a little bit of Utah, of Salt Lake County. But Salt Lake County, then, the whole would be in the middle of the county rather than edge. The problem that creates is the other district is unbelievable. As I've said, you start at Grous Creek in Boxeller County. You go to Garden City at Bear Lake, around to Manila, down to Blanding, or to St. George and back up. And so you create a rural district that is horrendous to do. And I think we, at least I have, as I've thought about it, it's sometimes better to take some of the populated area and put them in so you don't have such a huge rural area. And my experience has been that these rural areas are not all the same. There's a difference in the rural area in, say, Iron County than there is in Vernal. And although we talk about rural and urban, same, there's a difference in the urban area. If we end up dividing the county, which part should be the one? North, central, or south? If we do one district in the county, what should be here?
Well, I think the purple, which version is that? Purple 4 takes in the section of Davis County, but includes some of Summit. And I think that is the one that is under consideration at this point that seemed the most logical. But I would defer to you all because you're good at this and your principles that were outlined by the chair are the principles that I share. I think the concern that we have is that the world we're living in now, that we're, in my perspective, want to change and avoid, is that 3 along not such logical lines, right? So for the reasons that you outlined, we recognize where there's no perfect right in this for anybody, right? And I think we'd be comfortable with that Davis County piece and then some Summit County. But like you've said, you've spent so much time and down to your public process and actually moving things around. I have a great team working. In fact, Catherine Canders works with Lisa. She's my deputy mayor who runs a number of initiatives. And she was part of this initiative some time ago to move the consideration to the ballot. And I know that Judge Durham worked with her and others. And she's been doing a little digging for me, kind of, once I shared my principles and interests. And they happen to be that of the majority of mayors in the county as well. So I don't know if that helps, but you're wise, and we can work with either. But this one seems to be from the one that's on the table, this 4-Draft 3 that brings in some Summit County and Davis County.
I think part of the problem I have, as I looked at that, is it takes a big swath of southern Utah across that horrible thing known as the Colorado River. Pretty hard to get from Blanding to St. George unless you go in Arizona or clear up and down. But my question is.
Yeah, I didn't look at what's left over.
Then what you're saying is you would not want the northern part of Salt Lake County to be one district.
Right.
You would not want that, even though you could have clearly one district in Salt Lake County. And then the south part would be probably with Utah County or some trial like that.
And I don't have a quick answer for you. I mean, you know what I should probably do is go back and noodle with my staff and get back to you to give you a better answer.
Pass, please.
Okay, we will. Got it, Lisa? Thank you. All right. Again, I think, I appreciate you guys for doing this. Great work.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Mayor Overston?
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity, Mr. Chair and Commission. And I will be very brief in my remarks. I support Mayor Wilson in her idea that our county should be split into two, not three. And I do. counties should be split into two, not three. And I do favor Purple Draft Three, but I would just like to drill down to the Taylorsville piece. As, as I look through the code in preparing for this, and, and I read, and I've heard some key words from you, Mr. Chair. The code says that the commission keeps communities of interest in the same district, seek to follow natural geographic or manmade features, boundaries, or barriers, and minimize the division of municipalities. Obviously, for our city, this doesn't happen. So I'm here to say, please consider that our community, we are a community of interest, we would like to be kept whole, and we would like to be kept in one, one district and not divided into. We are, we are a community of 60,000 people, yet we are a community, and we would like to remain whole and not be divided. So I would appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, your, your being here with us and providing your feedback. So thank you.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do now is invite Soraya Maury to come on up and to, to talk a little bit about the public engagement process, as well as our website, although many of you are probably familiar with that. But just, make sure we're all on the same page.
Of course. Since we are winding down, I'll probably, I'll tell you how you can be most helpful to us right now, and that's by going to our website, UIRC.Utah.gov, and then you'll see options for drafted maps. And so you can click on each option, and you'll, we'll pull it up. But there will be tabs for you to go through and, and look at the, the maps that are currently, and just being worked on and, and thought about by the commissioners. So you'll be able to click on each, each version, and then you can zoom in as close as you'd like, so you can really get a good idea of your, your community and your neighborhoods, and see how things are split up and kept together, things like that. And when it loads, sometimes it's a little slow, but on the left, you'll see a place where you can give us some feedback. So you can give us just a little, little bit of information about you, and then select which map you're commenting on, and then give us information. And the more specific you can be about the information, the, the better for the commissioners and for us. If you can let us know, you know, what, what street is, is right or wrong, just whatever detail you can give us, that's the most helpful, as we are really winding down and, and finalizing these maps. And you can always email us and, and have, if you have any questions or concerns, we're always happy to, to help and, and chat with anybody who is interested in this. So, yeah, this is probably how you can help us most. And you'll see on the table over there, we have some, some snapshots, snapshots of different cities, just how the population has changed. But on, on those papers, you'll also see QR codes that will take you to the different maps as well, just that you can easily find it, if that's an easier way for you. So, thanks so much. We, we welcome all your comments and, and hope.
Thank you, Soraya. We have our, all of a sudden, I'm looking, and I don't see our executive director. So, given that he stepped out, I'll tell you how the public comment portion of the evening will go. We'll invite people for public comment to come up to this speaker. We'll ask that you take about five minutes and share with us your thoughts. And you, you may notice that, as we did with Mayor Wilson, there may be some questions that come from the commission, as we try and make sure we're understanding your perspectives. We tend to be very engaging with, with the public who comes to share their perspective with us. And so, yeah, we'd like to, welcome you to, to come on up individually. And we, we haven't asked for a sign up list or anything, so we just ask that you not push and shove to try and get up first. But if you'll, you know, come up orderly, we'd appreciate it, and we look forward to hearing your public comment. So whoever would like to go first?
And please tell us your name and where you're from. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Don Shelton. I'm a city council member from South Jordan City, and I'm here on behalf of the city, and, and Mayor Ramsey is with her family this evening and unable to attend. And I drew the short straw. I'm kidding. I, I can tell you that the city council has not taken any official position on any particular maps, and so I would be remiss to declare a favored map. But I really appreciated the principles that you enumerated, Mr. Chair, and in, in support of our fellow municipalities, I must say, I, I think dividing a city is not a good idea. So if, if you can create a map that meets all of your criteria without dividing cities, having multiple districts in a particular city, I, I think that would be terrific. As far as State House and Senate maps go, I can tell you that, you know, as a council member, every winter time, we lobby the, the Senate and the House extensively for issues that are important to us. And I, I have felt that there is some wisdom in having House seats that are House districts that cross city lines, so that, so they don't have one city fighting against another. I mean, we're, we're friendly with each other, but sometimes we find ourselves in a place of competition with each other. But I can tell you that my initial thoughts about that have, have changed. And, and they've changed because what I have observed is that inevitably, the representative who's representing, say, South Jordan and another city, will always tend to represent one of those cities far more than the other. And, and so if it were possible, personally, I would prefer to see House districts and Senate districts that have contiguous city boundaries as well. So, those are my thoughts. I appreciate the work you're doing. It seems enormous, and I hope the legislature takes you very seriously when you're done.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Can I ask him a question?
Please, Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you. I'm looking at the South Jordan map.
Yeah.
Which tells me there's 77,487 people in South Jordan.
I knew it was close to 80,000.
Well, this is some 80,000. One district in the House can only be 43,000.
Right.
So you clearly got enough room for one, and, and almost a second one.
Seems like.
If this city was divided in half, you'd have the majority in two districts.
Right.
Two people living in South Jordan elected the legislature, may still, depending on where we draw the lines.
Of course.
Let me explain that really a challenge we have is that not only do we have the numbers have to come out even, but we, in some places, for example, if we're dealing in, in Rich County, by Bear Lake, we cannot go north east, and we can't go north. So to get our numbers, to get a number of 43,000, we have to either go west into Cache Valley, or south into Summit County. And so, as we tried, Commissioner Thorne and I, to do like a jigsaw puzzle, do the outsides first, because you have less flexibility.
Makes a lot of sense.
The price you really pay is now we get in a congested crowded area like Taylorsville or South Jordan. Now, as you start putting these blocks together, and, and the census has census blocks, and somebody told me there's 77,000 of them. So we have to take a census block, as we do, or add one census block, and we don't know how they find them out. We just see them on a map. They have 35 people in it, and next census block next to it may have 412. So we have to put all those in as we start doing districts. And I think, I speak for Commissioner Thorne and I, we've worked pretty hard to try to protect city boundaries. Some of these things are objective. I can count the number, I can count the city boundary slides, but I have a hard time counting what is community of interest. You know, is, is the Canyon School District that broke off from Jordan, or they, they must be different, but they wouldn't have broken off. And so, you know, how do I measure that type of thing? So I would appreciate if, if you look at these maps, and, and there's a whole bunch of them that we've done for the House. Senate, you have to have, what, 112, something like that. So you could be the basis of a Senate district, but certainly it would be bigger than South.
Of course, yeah.
But I, I would recommend that you look at that and then get back to us and say, "Now, if you're going to divide it, here's where we'd like to have it divided."
I can tell you.
We wish, we wish it were that clean, because we may have 50,000 extra up here. Now we have to find the 72 for the Senate seat, and, and it's not, and so we pick up you, and we get 77, we're still short. How do we pick and put those together?
Yeah. And South Jordan divided at Bangator Highway. That, that Daybreak is clearly a community of interest that is different than the more traditional parts of the city. And Bangator Highway would, would be really close to the Daybreak border. Wouldn't be exact, but it would be close.
I, I can tell you that we're, we're now in the process of looking at all the maps and trying to assess them against each other, trying to figure out what our top picks will be to give to the legislature. And one of the things we are analyzing are the numbers of county and city splits. And I, I think, I, I know as I'm doing that, I'm much more favorably disposed to maps that have fewer city splits, and that was actually a really high priority in our mapping process as well as well. So that's just to say we're trying.
I'm, I'm confident that's true. Thank you so much, Judge.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them.
I appreciate being here.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Casey Saxton. I live in Riverton. I really appreciate the councilman's comments. My comments mirror almost exactly what he had to say. As a resident of Riverton, and I, and I'm not here to speak to, to congressional maps, I'm here to speak to, to a couple of the proposed House maps. I have, I have grave concerns, and I really hope that you would consider what I have to say. So my city of Riverton, where I live, chops in, in Orange Utah House One, Draft One map, it chops Riverton into three districts. And we, we're a city of just over 45,000 people. It, it looked to me like the, the Riverton city wouldn't have a majority in any of those three districts, and that, that really would be a shame. I think any community that is above that, you know, that 40, 41, 42,000 mark ought to have a, a district that's at least a majority represented by that population. The other, the Utah House Three Draft One is perhaps even worse, because it splits Riverton up into four different districts, and is extremely disagreeable to me as a resident. And I, and I only say that not because we don't have a lot in common with our neighboring cities of Harriman, Bluffdale, and South Jordan. We do. We have a lot in common, but, but we also have unique interests. And if, if my community of Riverton doesn't have a majority in any of those seats, I, I don't know that, that, that our community's interests would be represented well. Map, the Purple Utah House Two, Draft Two map is, is a little bit more amenable to me, just looking at the, at the map, but it, it splits, I'm not, I don't live in Bluffdale, but it splits up Bluffdale pretty bad. And I, I've played around with the map myself, and I know that this is not easy to do. And at some point, you have to draw a line, and one person living next to each other or across the street from each other are in different districts, and that is a reality. And, and so I don't envy the job that you're trying to do. So I, I just wanted to make those comments and, and hope that, that you would consider trying to keep those communities of interest a little bit more together. I realize the city's going to need to be split. I hope it doesn't get split more than twice. Or if it does, at least there's, there's one, one district that has a majority of residents, and I would hope the same thing for any community in the same situation. And then lastly, just a couple of observations. I lived in, in Cache Valley for eight years, and I have a lot of family connections in Summit County, and I have a couple of concerns with maps. I just want to point out a couple of things, because these are communities that I'm familiar with. The Orange Utah House One Draft One map pulls Hoytsville out of, out of the rest of rural Summit County and puts it in a different district than Colville, which is right next door. They're both rural communities, not high populations. I didn't think that one made a lot of sense. And then in the Utah House Three Draft One plan, in Cache Valley, that one of the most northern communities in the valley is called Richmond, and it, it places a portion of Richmond, just, just a few blocks of Richmond in a district that doesn't touch any of the rest of Cache Valley. And to me, that, I know that's a solvable problem, and it doesn't need to be that way, because you're dealing with population numbers that are so small. So those are just a few things that I wanted you to consider. And lastly, I'm not here on a partisan basis or anything like that, and I, I appreciate the work is, the, the work the commission is doing. My hope is that the maps you present to the legislature will at, at least be in the realm of, of somewhat agreeable to the legislature. The last thing that I, I would hate to see for the commission is for them just to, to dis, disown the commission maps, because they're not at all agreeable to those that are in the legislature. I think this commission will have more power and more, more trust over time, if there's, if there's balance in the maps that you represent to the legislature. So thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hepworth, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you, too. Speaking of House districts, so I finished up what's probably my final House map, if I could present that quickly. 1.5, cool.
Joey, you know, do we already have that one printed out?
Yeah, I, I just finished it up this morning, going through everything, looking for things that could be improved, touching up things all over the place. I redid the Provo area almost completely. This is my State House map, the 1.5. So.
On that, but change.
In the, in the Provo area, what I did was I looked at, I think it was Daniel Friend's feedback about not having a district that crosses between Provo and Springville, keeping those completely separate, as well as the, keeping all the Provo neighborhoods together. This map only splits a single Provo neighborhood. It has, it does some more splitting in Orm, which is less defined neighborhoods. But all, all the Provo neighborhoods, except for, I believe it was Lake Shore, are kept whole. That this, in the process of doing this, I was also able to go back to my original layout with the, with Juab and North San, San Pete, and putting those back together. They were together when I first started. I had them separated for a time. Now I've reunited them. Here in the south, south end of Salt Lake County, the southwest end, my 42nd district is almost entirely contained within Harriman. It contains about 1,700 people from the odd part of Riverton that juts out, and the rest of it is entirely within Harriman. The rest of Harriman, 9,000 people on the north end are in the 22nd district, which also contains the Daybreak area, and 5,000 people in the southeast end are in the 52nd, which contains all of Bluffdale and a good part of Lehigh. I, you know, in the old draft, 3,000 people in Harriman were in the Riverton-based 41st district. I changed that. It's a bit less compact, but it follows the city boundaries. The, so almost all of Harriman, except for that 1,700 people, is in the 45th, 41st district. The 50th district is wholly based in South Jordan. Before, there was an odd arm in the West Jordan 47th district extending on the southern end along 94th. I fixed that. Further north, I cleaned up, in Weaver County, I cleaned up the Ogden area. So that, that's better aligned to Ogden's neighborhoods. Particularly, I moved the southern end, southeastern end of Ogden from the 8th district into the 10th. Particularly, I moved the southern end, uh southeastern end of Ogden from the eighth district into the tenth, and moved the northeastern end from the ninth district into the eighth. I also uh have cleaned up the uh twenty-ninth district a bit more so that uh it's even more um rural in character than it was before. So are there any questions from the Commissioners?
Please.
Thank you. So um so you're saying Harriman is divided into two or three districts then?
It's divided into uh on my map, it's divided into three districts, one of which is almost entirely based in it. One of them, uh so of the other two, one takes nine thousand people from the north end and puts it with Daybreak. The other takes five thousand people from the uh southeast end and puts it with Bluffdale and part of Lehigh.
Thank you.
Back up to see Weaver County. What you did is Weaver on her.
Yeah, I know that uh one of your complaints on a previous draft of this map was that the the district that kind of snakes from Wellsville uh all the way through the south part of Foxouter County into Weaver County went into like Pleasant View, and I I fixed that uh a couple drafts ago. So now it's just uh in the more rural areas of Weaver County, Plain City, Marriott Sladeville, and uh Hooper.
What's that? Was that purple a different district? That's where Logan is?
Yeah, Logan is wholly within one district, or well, there's a district wholly with within Logan. Uh Logan's too large to be contained in a single district, so the rest of it is in the uh fifth district, which also contains all of Rich County, as well as Providence, Nibley, Pyram, and um Millville. Shouldn't have forgotten Millville's name for a second. My uh maternal grandparents lived there for a while.
You've divided Cache Valley into four districts.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Yeah, and uh you you've certainly you've earned uh your your star with us.
Yeah, I'd really encourage you to submit either the map as it is or a modified version of it to the legislature as one of your three maps. Uh it's uh completely road contiguous, so you can drive from one end of a district to another end without having to go on odd dirt roads or cross district lines or state lines. And that's something that I noticed was lacking in all, I think, all of the draft House maps. And the the deviations are uh range from like to uh it's what, like one fifty above to two hundred below or something? I think actually it's lower than that, so it's like one fifty to minus one fifty. So that that leaves a lot of wiggle room to uh make changes as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. Uh my name is David Reese, and I'm a resident of South Jordan. I actually live in Daybreak, so I would like to echo what Councilman Shelton mentioned about Bangator as an excellent way of cutting South Jordan. If that's, because I would love for Daybreak to be uh to be kept together. If you look at the current House districts, and I realize that Daybreak wasn't nearly as big as it is now, but uh there's a very small slither of District Fifty-two that just kind of snakes up the middle of Daybreak, and then Daybreak is split so between three different House districts. And so it'd be really nice for Daybreak to be kept together. If you did have to split it, I would recommend a lawn Mountain View corridor as a secondary split, or a lawn the major east-west thoroughfares of South Jordan Parkway and Daybreak Parkway, if you had to, because it's not common that you'll send your kids to cross the street to play with friends on the other side of those major thoroughfares. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. I would, um obviously, that's regarding House districts. Uh one thing I would like to mention is that I feel that it 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 is definitely uh appropriate to have larger deviations for the point of keeping cities and neighborhoods together. I realize that may make it harder to defend in some cases, but as long as you're trying to keep the cities and counties together, I think that that's a very good good reason to do so. In fact, I know that there are four municipal uh municipalities that have pretty much the exact number for a a state House, Eagle Mountain, Bountiful, Riverton, and then Summit County. And I've I've been messing with the maps, and so I know it is difficult, but one of the things that I like aside from starting with the edges, which I think makes a lot of sense, is also starting with those as their own as their own entities, um and then working around them, that if you have to split up a different city, so be it. Uh it's going to be split up anyway. Or if it's going to be combined, so be it. It's going to be combined anyway. So that would be a suggestion. I realize you guys already have a lot of your maps finished, though, so that's okay. Um one of the other things that I did want to mention, uh so those are, that's regard is in regards to the House districts. One of the things that I would like to address, though, is some of the some of the um criticisms that I've heard regarding the congressional maps. I realize um that some of the Commissioners have commented about the size of an entirely rural district. I I understand that um that criticism. However, I would argue that there are congressional districts that are much, much, much larger than anything that would be in a just a rural part of Utah. And the, one of the things that I would think would be useful to consider with a congressional district that does contain all of rural Utah is the fact that counties with less than sixty thousand people or with less than seventy thousand people would make up the majority of that district, which means that they would have really the say in who would, they would have a large portion of the say in who would get to represent them. As it currently stands, if we split up the um as the as the districts currently stand, no district has more, no county, no district has more than twenty-two percent of its population, from counties less than sixty percent. That means they couldn't really even win a primary if they all banded together. And so if they, I realize we talk often about the rural part of Utah wanting um being helped by having all of the, uh having each of the districts containing a part of rural Utah. But in my mind, that really only counts if the rural parts are actually part of the majority. And in no case, unless you put all of the counties with less than uh twenty-five, uh with less than a quarter of a million of the population, uh with less than a quarter of a million people in population, unless you put them all together, those counties really don't, they are relying on us in the urban counties to actually elect people that will bother listening to them, which is fine if you guys feel you guys have the experience. The legislature has the experience of knowing if that's the case, but um I I would invite you to consider that as you consider putting uh that um putting those rural counties together. I really do appreciate uh that you guys are considering having maps of different flavors, as you have put it in the uh to this, to the um to the Legislative Committee. I I think that's really good. And I would mention this to actually the people that are attending here that live in this area. Uh one of our representatives, actually Senator Fillmore, is on the redistricting commission uh committee, sorry, is on the redistricting committee. And so I I personally have found him very responsive to concerns from his constituents. And so if you have concerns about any of the maps the Commission submits, uh Senator Fillmore will have a large say in what goes on it. So I encourage my fellow constituents to consider that as well. Uh at that, uh that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Question back to the Daybreak area?
Yeah.
You mentioned that if it was needed to split Daybreak, you mentioned the Mountain View corridor and and one other street, but I didn't catch that.
Uh well, so Mountain View corridor, east-west would be a Mountain View corridor. Uh but if you had to split it north-south, then I would suggest either along Daybreak Parkway or along uh South Jordan Parkway. Those are the two major east-west thoroughfares that go through Daybreak. And so if you did have to split it somewhere in the north or south, I would recommend that. That reminds me of my last comment that I wanted to mention. I've I my, I have found that we would, if you did put Daybreak, Daybreak only has around thirty-ish, thirty-five thousand people in it. Um well, according to the census, of course, it's probably quite a bit different in the year and a half since then. But if you if you would have to put us with somebody, putting us with Riverton, West Jordan, Harriman, I don't think there would be any concern of that. Uh my wife takes our girls to Parks in all three of those cities, and it feels very much connected with any of those other three surrounding cities, including Copertan. We go to Parks there as well, so. I wouldn't have, I don't think there would be any issue with combining those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome other public comments. Okay. Oh, Ron, Phil, go ahead, please.
Hello, thank you. Um can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thanks. Um yeah, so uh I wasn't able to make it down to Harriman. Uh I'm from uh Taylorsville. I really appreciate, I I guess I really wanted to to start off with but but positive and say that I I've really enjoyed being able to uh see some of the the public availability of this process. And it's been very helpful for me. Um I uh for the back in Prop Four, I was uh very much in support of it, uh and I I really to I was uh I have hope in this process and kind of faith uh that this is something that can uh really have a positive impact uh on the state to improve uh for, you know, for for all the levels. So um a- and uh as part of that support, I ended up giving some presentations kind of just independently for people that I knew about uh Prop Prop Four, uh just to let them know what was, what I understood and had read about it. So I've appreciated um your work, which I acknowledge has been a lot. The uh comment I wanted to give uh be beyond just saying thanks, uh I think uh has been hit on maybe by some people that are even uh better at presenting information and comments than I am. But I did have uh maybe just to reiterate the concern with the congressional maps. I've reviewed the uh the videos um of the actual map drawing process. And I I think um I'd like to urge the committee to steer away from kind of this uh the pizza slice, which I've heard it called, way of districting where you grab a slice out of Salt Lake and then send it out with a a chunk of Utah, which is sort of what uh the current map, the twenty-ten map has in in favor of, I guess, the, what do they call it? The uh the donut hole version, which is a consolidating consolidating Salt Lake into more of a, maybe just a two-split, which is the minimum that it needs. A few of the, it it, the uh, one of the points is to the, on the district size, I think that that's sort of just a factor of Utah being big and maybe uh uh something that that can be lived with as opposed to uh really the kind of it, trying to get districts that look kind of nicer and more the same size on the map because the, really, the districting is about representation. I think uh going for the pizza slice version kind of gives uh, puts everyone with a bunch of other people that maybe they don't feel like uh are as representative of their uh needs. So like I was listening to the podcast, uh just, I think it came out today, Salt Lake Tribune, that uh where you you all went down to Saint George, and Saint George said, we don't really like being with Salt Lake. And then I imagine if you come up here to Salt Lake, people say, we don't know why we're with Saint George. And so I think that that's sort of what the pizza slice gives you, that nobody's really happy with their district as a result. And then also with some of these uh rural districts, it it might give an opportunity to group uh districts that uh are concerned about water rights, uh farming, tourism, conservation. So a lot of those might be more rural uh issues, uh Native American issues. And then you can contrast that with like a urban district, which might be more concerned with like public transit or like Hill Air Force Base or the inland port, things of that nature. Infrastructure, roads. So I guess all of those points, not as well uh stated as others, but I wanted to reiterate that, and thank you for the time to say so.
Thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
Are there other public comments? Please.
Good evening. Um first of all, I want to reiterate reiterate what the gentleman on the phone said. I really appreciate the process and sure, my name is Tish Broker, and I'm actually a Councilmember in Riverton, just just south of here. So I really appreciate the process. And I hope the Legislature is really to listen to all the feedback and the comments that you're receiving during this process. My comment is, um in Riverton, we're divided into districts, and I represent an older part of Riverton, which is down by the river. And I have a gentleman that sits next to me who represents the newer part of Riverton up here by Harriman. And I think it works really well because we're able to be very close to a connected neighborhood that has similar concerns. When you talk about roads, sewer, lighting, traffic, our concerns are slightly different, and yet we're all part of one community. And so we're able to really verbalize what's happening in our part of town, and therefore what we think we need to have happen for the entire city of Riverton. And so I'm much less in favor of the orange maps, which divide Riverton up um because I think that gives us, well, I don't think, it gives us much less of a voice at the legislature, and the same thing works at that state level that works here at the city level. It's nice to have that unified voice that we can take our concerns um and feel like we're in in listened to and and um responsive to. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Question for you. As I look at Riverton, you're forty-five thousand two hundred, so you're two thousand too many.
Yes.
So we have to, if if we kept Riverton whole, we still would have to cut off two thousand. And then we don't know where, which way that goes. Harriman up here is bigger than you, and so they have to lose some. We don't know where to put them. We put them north, we put them east, we put them south. That's part of the problem we have that makes this puzzle so hard, is that we we have to do the numbers. So
Right.
What would you, what, how would you suggest we cut Riverton up? And where would I put the land you don't want to stay in in the House District of Riverton?
Um so your question is, there's at least two thousand that are going to have to move into a different district. Where should we take those two thousand from? I'm only going to speak for me and my end of Riverton. But I would say you would cut it so that those folks that live in the the uh western end of Riverton that are more part of Harriman, because honestly, that's a prevailing issue we have in Riverton all the time anyway, where most residents, once you get past Bangator or Mountain View, they think they live in Riverton. You can call several of the stores up here that are part of Riverton, and they'll tell you they're in Harriman, you know, welcome. Uh you know, hey, we're the, I won't tell you the stories, but anyway, it's it's a problem. So I I think for them, and and they're going to have the similar problems, right? They've they've got the problems with all the massive growth, all the traffic. How are they going to get to the roads? I'm really lucky. I'm close to I fifteen. So my issues are quite different than if you live up here on this end.
I was just looking, Harriman, for example, is fifty-five thousand. So they've got to take thirteen thousand and twelve thousand out of Harriman. Where do we put them? And if we put them with your two thousand, we're still short. We now have to find South Jordan. Desert from South Jordan, you don't want to be cut up either. But South Jordan has, that is a
Absolutely.
Everything you do.
And in, and in ten years, of course, you know, Harriman, you'll just, it'll be its own district, right? It's going to be so massive. But at the same time, if you look at Riverton, there are some parts of Harriman that move into Riverton directly. They move east from Bangator. There's some little sections there. So for me, I, I would think dividing them along those major highways, that's really how people view their communities much of the time. Might, might be a helpful suggestion.
Almost easier when you're just short add than to take away.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, Siria, put on your best reading voice.
Okay, so this is from Tab Lin Uno. He came last week. But he just wanted to, for us to read something for him. He says, my name is Tab Lin Uno and my firm intention since March twenty eighteen has been and continues to be candidate for what currently is the Utah House Legislative District thirteen, which has been and continues to be represented by Representative Paul Ray and the current incumbent for the past sixteen years. With my comments here tonight, I do not want to imply any disrespect for the studious and conscientious work that the commission has undertaken to this point. But as I have spoken with thousands of residents in person living in Northern Davis County during the past four years, and hundreds of them have experienced their inspiration, I have helped to instill in them and their hope that I may one day be able to represent them at our Utah State Legislature. I feel a great obligation to speak on their behalf and my own. I have had time to reflect on a vital and important statutory requirement of the commission since last Friday, when I came before you and have since become aware of specific map proposals, candidate requirements, and some of the difficult decisions before this commission. The one statutory requirement that I am concerned with here tonight is the difficult parsing of the language that prohibits the purposeful or undue favoring or disfavoring of incumbents, candidates, and political parties by this commission. I am here tonight to express my belief that three of the four proposed maps before the commission impacting Utah House District thirteen, clearly and unduly favors the incumbent and disfavors me as a candidate for the same office and thus are prohibited by state statute. Now, even though the commission in good faith made a decision to avoid any consideration of existing incumbents, candidates, and partisanship during your discussions and development of new redistrict, newer districted electoral districts, the commission, while not purposely providing undue favoritism to the incumbent in Utah House District thirteen, has likely put my candidacy in disfavor and in jeopardy next year. And thus, the commission is close to unintentionally, in my mind, violating statutory law if it adopts any of the three of four proposed maps that greatly alter the existing House District thirteen configuration. As the statutory provision prohibiting favoritism or disfavoritism is exclusive, not inclusive, that instead of prohibiting purposeful and undue favoring or disfavoring, the language of the law prohibits the purposeful or undue favoring or disfavoring of incumbents, candidates, or political parties. And thus, I believe the commission has the legal obligation to ensure that any maps it proposes and adopts will not favor or disfavor any incumbent nor candidate for political office, intentionally or unintentionally, even if undertaken without purposefulness, to favor or disfavor any incumbent or candidate. The solution, in my opinion, and in my particular case, would be to consider including my residents in any redistricted maps that includes Representative Paul Ray's residence, so that we both have an equivalent or similar opportunity to be elected in twenty twenty-two as in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty.
Thank you. Commissioner Durham.
Thank you very much for the comment, but the comment highlights a really significant issue and problem that we're wrestling with because in order to even take into consideration the comment in looking at our masks, maps, we would have to consider where, which incumbent, incumbent is where, who candidates are. All of that data is off the table for us. We haven't looked at any of it. And thus far, I think as a commission, we are leaning, although we're still discussing this, but I think we're leaning towards the notion that the statute requires us to completely avoid any consideration that would favor a candidate, an incumbent, or a party. And that if we do that in the process, we are not called upon and in fact, would probably violate the statute if we were to take those factors into consideration after the fact. So we're not through discussing that, but I wanted to make that response because, you know, you've all heard the comment. I think for public education purposes, it's important to understand what we can and we cannot do.
Thank you. Are there any other thoughts from any commissioners?
Yeah, let me add one other thing for staff. If, if Tap told us what his address was, would you make sure you don't tell us what his address is? Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I saw Matt earlier. Is it Matt online or?
He's here, or he was here.
Oh, he's, he's hiding. Okay. He heard that there might be a legal question. Okay. Rex, Rex, please, Commissioner Hilliard.
I want to follow up with what Commissioner Durham said. You know, it really puts us in a dilemma when somebody comes up to me and says, you have to do this district so that my candidate or my party for that will be favored. I want to say, don't even talk about it. I don't even want to hear it. Because I'm so concerned when you draw the line, somebody's going to say, oh, I overhyped that conversation and you did what they wanted. And, and I know that when we get through, there are going to be lots of people who are going to get the figures and go through, aha, he favored them, he favored them. Because we're not looking at it. I think, again, Commissioner Durham mentioned that one of her, one of the maps that she'd worked on was put up and somebody had critiqued it with political information, said, oh, she's clearly favoring one over another. It's never been discussed. Commissioner Thorn and I have spent many hours together working over there. I happen to know where some of the legislators live, maybe four or five, but I've never mentioned it. It's never been in any of my decisions and discussions. So I, I, you know, when, when you get a comment like that, it's in a public meeting, we have to hear it. But I can tell you, I'm, I'm not going to give any credence of where we draw lines or what we do lines, because I think once we start doing that, we'll be on a slippery slope that we'll really be sorry. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that I, I think that one of the motivations for the petition was that they wanted lines drawn in as fair a manner as possible without that kind of political information. So it's not drawn to favor anybody. The map ultimately, the elections might, might go one way or the other, but it won't be because we intended it to happen or we designed a district to do that. The districts are drawn as fair a way as possible, trying to keep even numbers, trying to keep cities and counties together, trying to make sense of lines and not, not have some strange creatures created on the maps.
Except when we follow city boundaries.
Yes. Thank you. I, I don't think there was any other comments from council that we needed to worry about. Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments, please?
Masca, my name is Laurel Price. I'm a Harriman City resident. Thank you so much for coming to our city and for all of the work that you've been doing. It's been months and months and I've followed you from a distance and appreciate all of the efforts that you are putting into this process. I just wanted to, to come discuss just a little bit from a, I'm a former congressional staffer for Congressional District Four. And some of the chatter that I've been hearing about the pizza slices and the urban and rural concern me a little bit. And I just want to give you my plug for not having a rural congressional district in our state. As you know, because of the way the population is, just having a rural representative would mean that they would take in a huge chunk of the state. And as somebody who worked in the congressional office on the district level, the number one job is to serve those constituents. And it would require an immense amount of travel. The, the budget of the congressional offices is significantly smaller. And if you think about it from the perspective of a senate office, which has much more money to cover an entire state, a congressional office does not. And you're looking at an immense amount of travel for staff, which I think would be extremely difficult. For that reason, just because of the way that our population base is here in Utah, I am an advocate of an urban rural split for that reason. I think on a congressional level, the more representation you have, the better. You have more voices in Washington, more people to advocate for you, and that's a good thing. And I think that our state should think twice about getting rid of those representatives, representatives on the congressional level. That is, for any city and for any congressional district, we, we want to have more representation in Washington, more people that you can go and see to advocate for your issues. So that, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Anything else online? Yeah, so we'll ask Professor personally to come up shortly. All right, so.
Just wanted to, just wanted to quickly say, on the point of urban rural districts, I've talked about this before. But the, the idea that having more representatives represent a city or an area increases their voice, that only works up until the point where they're so divided between all these different districts that none of the represented, they're so small minority and all, all of the districts that they're split between, that none of the representatives have to listen to them in order to be reelected. So the, there's a point where it works and a point where it doesn't. And you can have, you're going to have to have rural areas mixed in with urban areas, but that doesn't mean that every single district has to have an urban and rural split. You can have a predominantly urban district or even two predominantly urban districts and still split the rest of the state, including all the rural areas in a way that's logistically feasible for a member of Congress and their staffers.
Thank you. All right, with, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of our meetings. And we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is, it says approval of final maps for submission, but I don't think we're quite at the approval for final map. We still need to discuss it a bit.
Yeah, we wanted to discuss it. And so what we'd like to do is just take a few minute recess. We wanted to put some tables in front with monitors so we could compare the maps. We believe that will be important in the process. So you can see them side by side, zoomed in and zoomed out at different locations. And so
Just, just for the attendees, we're, we're now moving into a business meeting portion and you're welcome to stay. Or we might have to move your chairs back depending on how much room we need for the tables. But we're going to be looking at maps and debating them and trying to pick our choices.
We had the public comment portion. Now we're going into the business session.
But the interest of being transparent, you're certainly free to stay and watch what we're doing.
Exactly.
And we'll have a public comment meeting Saturday at West Valley and then again Monday. So all those are, are still, and you can email us anytime.
Okay, so So we'll take a brief recess.
Yeah, so we I do want to just, again, you, yes.
Can I interrupt? Just for a personal privilege before we actually.
Please.
As you know, I was up teaching again, and part of what I have been going through is political signage. I just wanted to know that one of the one of the signs I was using as an example, and what has happened here is, is one of the best examples of good political signage happens to be this one. So Karen, I just brought this to make sure that you knew that you haven't been forgotten. I am abusing and using.
Well, I'm glad it's serving you in summer.
And they came up with, you know, name, office, contrast. You got it, you did it well.
Well, thank you very much. I'll I'll share that news with my friends.
That is great. If you can embarrass any member of the commission, it's always valuable. No, I again, just, so tonight is kind of an important night because for us, it's been the last, since you guys, April, but it's been from better boundaries, you know, two, three years ago. And so we're coming up to this point in, you know, week and a half or less on the first that we're going to be done. And so Nate has been helping us, and today he came in and we spent a lot of time going over a number of issues. And I just wanted him to kind of tell his thoughts about this commission and what he's seen. And so let me have that, and then we'll start on some of the the work. Well, thank you, and thank you all for.
Yeah, just for the audience's sake, Professor personally is a professor at Stanford Law, just to give you some context of, we didn't just drag him in off the street. So he's a nationally recognized expert in redistricting, so.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for working with me in this process. It's been a wonderful process to behold. I will say that it's usually at this stage that commissions are wondering what they got themselves into, right? Which is that this is a.
It started a little earlier.
Yes, well, it is, you know, I know how hard you all have worked, and I have to tell you, I have used you as a model for others around the country to say, look what Utah is doing, okay? I'm told this is the Utah way, right? Both the level of diligence that you brought to this map drawing process, but also the success with your maps. I can say this as someone, you know, who is evaluating hundreds of maps around the country, just the quality of the work that you all have put in is really incredibly impressive. And I don't say that to all of my commissions, just so you know. I mean, it is really extraordinary to see, because I, the fact that you were doing all of your line drawing on live streaming on YouTube is really, I think, a model for how this can be done going forward. The comedy and collegiality among the commission really is something that I would hope other commissions and other redistricting bodies can emulate. As you know, there are commissions around the country that are falling apart right now, and the fact that that you all have have sort of joined together in accomplishing this mission, I know is, you know, extraordinary and a real tribute to you. And and I'll say, like I said, this is this is the hard part, right? This is when disagreements that may have have been put under the rug for for some time then come, you know, full force when the rubber meets the road. But but I'm hopeful and prayerful that it will, that the comedy and collegiality that you've shown, the bipartisanship, will really carry you over the line here, because it's not just about Utah at this point. It really is setting an example for the entire country. And so I've been proud to be associated with this effort, sitting next to you in front of those commuter, those computers a while ago, and then seeing, you know, what you've produced since then. It's not easy, as you know, to start up, you know, the redistricting process, having not done it before. This is my third, I guess, my, you know, over my third redistricting cycle that I've been drawing maps, and it probably took me a full cycle before I could achieve the level of professionalism and skill that you all have shown here. So I just wanted to to at least be a cheerleader at the beginning here, so that you know where you stack in terms of what's happening around the country. It really is an impressive accomplishment. And and hopefully that the kind of, the 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 good feeling that at least I see, and as I said, the Utah way that I've witnessed, will will carry you to sort of promising conclusion. So thank you for letting me be here. I will, I'll turn it back over to Gordon, and but I'm also happy to come back and talk to you about specific maps.
Please, Mr. Hilliard has a question. Appreciate you being here, because I think it's really added to how it works. Gordon made a comment that you've looked at all the maps that we're now doing, and they all seem to generally fit the criteria. We don't have a map that's really out of bounds, that that if we took any one of the ones we're looking at, we would meet the the criteria of good maps. Is that correct?
Well, I would say most of them do. I the question is how you would interpret some of the criteria, particularly as regards to politics, right? And so I want to just leave that out for now, but I think in terms of the, you know, particularly the the state legislative maps and school board maps I, you know, been really impressed with, I'm not sure who drew which which ones of of the districts. I forget which team you all were on. Happy to talk about any individual map if if you'd like, but but part of it is, you know, just looking at the statistical evaluations on on some of them.
I think one comment on me, too, we've had a number of maps turned into us in the publics, and as I've looked over those, I've been concerned, and I think they may not have understood completely the criteria they needed to do. So I think if we turn down some of the public ones, it's not because we don't appreciate the work they've done, but in the criteria that we've tried to follow, they haven't quite met it. Although I understand that our staff has been pretty careful, that those that get sent in that are way off base, they don't show it to us.
Yeah, I'd say, and that's that's quite typical around the country, right? You'll get a quite a range, as I think I said to you the first time we met. Redistricting brings out a certain interesting personality, right? That that lies, it's sort of like the the Chikadas, right? It sort of sleeps for 10 years, and then suddenly, certain people come out in the redistricting process. So it's it's, you're going to get all kinds of maps with different motivations that come in. Obviously, some of them are pretextual political maps, you know, that that are going to be brought in. Some of them are going to be ones where people are experimenting with the software and the like.
Thank you.
So what we've done is, we had the staff vet the maps that came in from the public. Hemsworth maps were some of the ones you did see, they made it through the staff vetting, and we wanted you to have a chance to look at those. And and maps that you, each of the teams, there were some of the team maps that you did not forward, and so those have dropped by the wayside as well. So you had a packet of about 34 maps, plus or minus, that we felt vetted through worthiness to have you spend a bunch of time and energy to look through. And so what we thought would be valuable, and and we can modify this as we go through this, to 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 rank maps that you feel should move forward to the 12. And we thought we'd start with school district maps, and and talk about the group that we've given you, and let you kind of discuss among yourself. I thought we would list them, give you a chance to vote on them, and your vote, even if it has the most, doesn't mean it's your most popular one. It would be just that the top three vote getters move on to the pack of 12. And we would kind of go through each of the maps that would be, that would go to the to the group of 12, and then you.
then eventually we're going to come and vote on the whole 12. So the so that if you feel comfortable, you may hate two of the maps in the 12, but you're willing to vote the whole map through because you feel like in each category, there's one that represents your feelings about how things should go forward. If we don't get there, then we'll fall back to the statute. The statute has a provision that if we're not unanimous on a particular, we can go through all 12 with a vote following the statute. So not that I want to avoid that, but if we can have a group go forward, it doesn't necessarily have to have a priority. If the commission desires to have priorities, we can look at that. But today, in this meeting, I'd like to just have a set of 12 so that each team that's the steward of that map knows which maps they need to refine. We can't refine 34, we we only can refine 12, and we need to start on those very soon. Monday, we have another meeting, and that one, we can do any additional cleanup. If we determine that we need to have votes to 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 justify getting those through and follow the statute, we would, we could do it that day as well. So that's our intent today is to try to start and go through all 12, all four of the types of maps and see if we can get there. That's that's the purpose of today. And so let me describe what I was thinking on the voting, and if we hate it, we can do it another way. And if you don't like that, we can do it a third or fourth way. So the way I was anticipating doing this is we would list, say, for initially the school district maps. We would be able to, I'm going to turn the time over to Moon, who will give you the statistical analysis of those four school district, whatever the number of school district maps are. And then you can bring up and look at specific questions. Now, the statistical analysis is important. They're good for vetting, but I think there's going to be issues, particularly in the school district maps, where we bring this one up a lot, so I don't want to beat it to death, but Spanish Valley down in San Juan County, we want a county split there. And so there's probably members of this commission that wouldn't accept a map that unless we either combine San Juan and Grand or we cut that little piece out. And so that may show a deviation that you're willing to accept because something else is a priority. Or you may want to zoom in on a city and see how we handle that. So what Moon is showing you will help you, but it won't dictate your decision. It could, but it's not necessary. And of course, you're going to look at deviations and all the other aspects. And I think school district is the one area that we had the most request to look at a little larger deviation. And I'm not saying we should do it, but I'm just suggesting that that is part of your discussion for tonight. It was. Oh, yeah, she is not doing so. Yeah, so the school district map, you're just going to have to rely on Cassidy's assessment, which is good because this is the first cycle of partisanship on the school district maps. We have, we don't have that data. So if you'll.
But we aren't going to receive any partisanship data tonight.
Excuse me, we're not going to receive any data on the school district either, but no partisan data at all.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Thorne and Commissioner Durham.
I don't have a problem with doing that on the school board maps, but when we get to congressional maps, there are three maps I could vote for and say, these are the ones I would prefer. So I think for the sake of trying to keep consensus of mission, we ought to have three different categories of maps. And say, if there's a map of each of those categories, I can support all three, as opposed to say, those are the three that are my favorites.
Okay, and we can come back to the congressional maps and have that discussion when we get to that point. Yeah, I think that would be fine. Commissioner Durham?
I just wanted to note that you've got the the whiteboard placed behind the screen, so.
On purpose. I will know how it reads, and I'll tell you the winner.
Oh, okay.
And to Commissioner Thorne's comment, the idea was I would do this. So I think the voting will get easier and you're and we're going to find how this doesn't work. So by the time we we get to the congressional, we'll have a better sense of what I'm doing wrong, and we'll do it a better way each consecutive vote. But I do agree, I've heard from the commission that we do want to look at distinct maps in all the categories. In the school district, it appears when I look at them, they look different. And so I think you get there almost automatically, and the same with the House and Senate. It's the congressional that I think we're going to be focused on themes. If you see the themes with the Senate, the House, or the school district, I'm more than happy to entertain those as well. But I it's hard to envision what that theme would be. It's go ahead.
Commissioner Durham and then Commissioner Hilliard.
Yeah, in response to Commissioner Thorne's comment, and I agree the discussion is provided, but I just want to stake out a position in somewhat disagreement. I I don't necessarily think in the end that I will vote for maps that I would not, that I don't think fit the criteria just for the sake of having diversity, although I do honor the principle of giving the legislature choices.
And 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 we'll we'll be hitting this topic very heavily in three votes.
Commissioner Hilliard, my comment is starting with school boards that Commissioner Thorne and I started working on the basis of trying to keep the counties together because the counties were basically the school districts. We had to change that, and we spent, I think, two days going through and trying to prevent the cutting of cities. But we were going to spend yesterday or today working on school districts. We didn't want to cut school districts more than we had to either. So we haven't had a chance to look at that. As I went through this, there were a lot of those issues that I would hope that we get a decision made that subject to this, that each people, each person's actually going to have to go back and fine tune those issues.
Yeah, and I think there will be several of those kinds of issues where we find a map that we go, yeah, we really like it, but can we possibly address X or Y? I think that's in the spirit of the the kind of work that we've been doing.
And and to emphasize that point even further, Commissioner, our Chair Facer and I were at the at Murray School District this morning, meeting with the Salt Lake County School Board. And they've asked for some changes that I think Green Team will likely agree to. In fact, we've roughly done it, and we've and we're meeting tomorrow with the Davis School and Weber School Boards. And they're likely to come back with changes. So I envision that the 12 maps will undergo changes up until Thursday of next week. And so you're not, and maybe even longer if Commissioner Baker has anything to say about it. But but so these maps are being sent in their form, not in their final state. You you're, you know, the changes, you know, the changes he's looking at, you know, the changes that you need to make to refine them and to get the 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 deviations better and cleaner, and you know, each time you go over it, it's better. If we select a map from a a public submission, what I would like to do is assign a team to be a steward of that map to go and do the refinements to that map that need to be done. So once you own it, it's no longer owned by the public, but they can do what they want. But you now get to take it and do any refinements that need to be done to that map to to prepare it completely for the legislature. So your work is not done after tonight.
All right. Please.
I was just going to say, just to reemphasize what you're saying as well, that that we'll be tweaking these maps that we select tonight and that the public's input is still very, very much important to what we're doing. So that we'll still be taking that information, information we gleaned from tonight, information we gather on Saturday at our next public hearing, and anything we get in the next few days, we'll be able to incorporate that input into our maps.
Thank you. All right, so with that said, I'd like to, you know, discuss the school board maps. Commissioner Baker?
I would like to hear about the meeting this morning because I have delayed scoring my school board maps, pending the outcome of what you guys learned this morning.
Sure, and just to to bring everybody up to speed, we had a meeting earlier in the week with the school boards in Utah County. And then this morning, we had a meeting with the school boards in Salt Lake County. And so the school boards in Utah County asked that we make a small change to the green map. That was their preferred map. And they wanted to essentially trade Alpine for Orem. And we sent out to the Green Team a mockup of what that would be. And then when we met with the folks this morning.
And we actually, we actually talked about that last night, and we're able to.
To accommodate that.
Yeah.
And so that change isn't represented in the version that you have before you. The second change, the second change was from it today. And Bo's not with us, so I can't ask him to help me make sure I get it right. Yeah, but they wanted to to make a change with Magna and essentially severing it from Davis County and shifting it so that it was more of Salt Lake City that was with Davis County.
And what map was it?
That was the green map as well. And so we had staff look to see if that would be possible. And it is possible. And so, you know, we would want the team to actually finalize that if they're comfortable with that.
The shifting population, was that roughly balanced?
Yes.
In the draft?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so in the mockup that we had, and I want to say it was about 10,000 people. That's the number that sticks in my head. I could be.
Right.
Yeah, wrong.
That's what we had in Utah Counties.
Yeah. So but it was. Perfect. So with with that, we have support from schools that boards in Utah County and Salt Lake County. We have not yet heard from Davis and Weber. We'll hear from them tomorrow morning. And it's entirely possible that they will tell us they prefer the orange map or the purple map or or one of the others. I will add that one of the things that we did hear from both of the sets of school boards, you'll recall, we had the UEA submission, and both of the sets of school boards didn't like the UEA maps for a variety of reasons. It wasn't the same set of reasons that crossed. But they just felt that it divided the school districts in ways that they didn't appreciate. So that's kind of a summary.
Did they critique all of the existing school maps or just talk about the green and the UEA?
No, we also looked at the orange and purple as well, and.
They had the full packet that you got of the school. Then you get the other ones for the school difference, so they had those.
And we went through it, we went through them.
Yeah, it's just that green, to my surprise, is emerging as popular. But but I don't know what, you know, if if I'm thinking of green as a first choice, I'm not sure what my other two runner ups would be.
Yeah.
We got six of the two.
So.
Green, orange, and purple.
So we had a green, orange.
I know, but what?
And again, to what Commissioner Thorne said, looking at differences.
Oh, I am not being heard. So again, looking at each of those, and and again, they all, all the maps look very different to me on the school board. So you have a tough decision, Commissioner Durham, so I'm not going to answer which ones you should vote for after that.
So so how would you like to do this, Mr. Chair? Would you like us to, are we going to maybe eliminate some? Or would you like us to say which ones do you like then, which three have risen to the top?
Well, I I think I would prefer to, which ones have risen to the top for you rather than, you know, working from the bottom, if that works for folks? And so if somebody wants to nominate one that they want to make sure or wants to make sure it gets a tally on our board, so to speak.
Well, I I would put forth one. I do like the green and the purple. I I also have to say I like Stewart Hepworth Public School Board map as well. And I liked it for a few reasons. I thought it had relatively few splits, district splits. And and there were just a few numbers that I think we could tweak. There were some small numbers in part of Granite and in Murray that I think we could tweak just a bit. But I thought this was a good solid map that kept counties together. Again, very few county splits as well. So I would just put that out there as, I guess, a tick, one tick for a like.
Good.
Yeah.
Please, Commissioner Durham.
Question for Commissioner Hale. I I understand, and I may, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that the SH Public School Board map puts Spanish Fork, Mapleton, and Springville and Linden all with the basin. Is that, was that your understanding as well? It's the SH Public School Board that Karen was just. Because if that's the case, that that struck me as, I don't know what the rationale for that would be.
Does that fall into that, right?
So. I think it's Springville and Mapleton and part of Spanish Fork that do go over to the basin. I think you're correct on that. And.
And you can kind of see it in your screen, it's funny if you want to.
Oh, yeah. We're trying.
Or look at the map.
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
Or is it too heavy to move? You know, I always like it. Oh. No, it's good. Is it tilted?
It is.
Oh, that seems better.
This is the Hepworth School Board map, SH Public School Board. In our packet.
Let me give you my concern, and I I speak about the orange one that I helped put together. You'll notice on that, we've taken the basin and we've gone south. And if you remember correctly, the State Board came to us and said, please keep our educational regional service center together.
Yeah.
And you really do that, although you miss Rich County and some of Summit County and Morgan, but you do put the rest of it, and you have a second. So you have two of those districts put together, the rural things together, which I'm I'm always concerned when I see a map go all the way across the south because of the of the Colorado River. But in that, you'll notice also that, so it does not join, I don't think it joins with with the Utah County. And it it has that separate thing down in towards St. George.
So you're saying District Three does not join with Utah County? That was your comment, right?
Orange Board One, District Three does not join. I don't think.
No, yeah.
Now, I think when you look at B Four, that pretty well puts St. George in an area and includes Cedar City. But that leaves up the rest of the area coming up. Again, there's there's four regional service centers, one in the Northeast, one in the Central with Richfield as kind of center, one with Price as a center, one of St. George area is one. And so I think it's important that they have a representative there who understands that rural issue in the in the State Board. I have no particular problem with other one, other than, you know, like they said, they did not want to be joined with Utah County. And I and I I'm concerned always with the size of a map, but I don't think state school board people have as much data they work with constituents that a congressman does. And I think they can handle that. And again, it it unites pretty well. I, you know, the Native Americans group, that's an important issue, but I think they have their things together. So that's that's the difference I see between, and again, you can send both of them up. I'm not speaking really against the other ones, but that's the difference. When Commissioner Thorne and I did the orange School Board One, we started out with counties. And then we worked to try to get the the numbers all to work, and that was very difficult in Utah County and difficult in Davis County because you have to have more than one district in Salt Lake with the school districts they have there and trying to follow the lines. But again, that's the work that we did, and we didn't get it finished because we still didn't have a chance to go look at the school districts themselves to fine tune it. But as you look at the numbers. But as you look at the numbers, we come up pretty close in the deviation.
There are plenty of districts there.
There could be. We'll have to work with those together. We just get to that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Your indication was the service center.
Yeah.
That's where we started.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wasn't paying attention.
Well, essentially, I think we had a nomination of the orange school board.
What was the name of that person?
And of the purple school board. And of the green school.
Although I don't think it was Lyle that.
No, it was Karen who put up the green.
I got Karen already.
Yeah.
She gave up her three votes already. She's done. But you can keep talking.
So Lyle has only spoken out in favor of the orange map. So you can cross out Lyle's. So we don't need any fraudulent voting up there.
I am paying attention now. I am paying attention.
Let me just raise another issue with the purple school board. They take Box Elder County and go all the way down west side, Fox Elder County and Cache County with Bridgerland and Plithic. All those education things work very closely together. It seems strange to move that out of that northern Utah group that's all together. Because just like Colorado River, when you go from Box Elder to Corolla. They have some ties there, but go all the way down, I think you end up with districts that don't have a lot in common. But they do do a lot of the things I've talked about on the east side of the state. But with Richfield and St. George in the same district, which I think you got areas that are not covered in that rural area.
Lyle, you got two more votes, but you don't have to give them now. Just let people talk. But when you're ready, if you want, you can.
Other, well. Bishop, and then, you look like you wanted to say something.
No, I'm just ready to move on here. So I'll vote then because orange is okay with me, green is okay with me. And I'm not quite, I'm holding up on the last one. The SH SPD I could live with, but BDK SPD is a whole lot better, in my opinion, than. And primarily, it's because of, once again, how they've done this in Northern Utah. So I admit, I'm wholly biased here. I don't like to do that. But what BDK has done in putting Box Elder, Cache, Rich, and Morgan together with part of Weber is very similar to how it is drawn right now. And I simply like it better. I, and I, you know, the purple one I can be happy with too, if you want me to vote for that. But I have the same problem that Lyle has in having Box Elder going down, and that's purely parochial. There's nothing necessarily innately wrong with that. It's parochial.
Mr. Durham.
I'm sorry. I forgot what I was going to ask.
I apologize. Well, if it comes back to you, you can take a point of privilege, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other, Commissioner Thoron?
I'm ready to vote on my three.
Okay.
It's the orange map, I think, because we focused first on those service centers. And try to keep those together. And then I like the BDK school board because of the deviations and what it does in northern Utah. And then I like the SH school board again because of deviations.
Okay.
I think I'm ready with my three also. The green. Let's see, the BDK and the orange.
You want them in order?
I don't think there's an order of preference necessarily.
My three are orange, purple, and green.
Seems like there ought to be a song about that.
We'll let you make.
Sounds like a blank candy land.
Commissioner Hilliard, do you have two additional ones that you'd like to?
Well, I'm really concerned about the SH Public Board because of the combining.
Utah County with the basin?
I'm concerned about that. And the purple one I'm concerned about. I could vote for the green one and the orange one. And I think the other one I put in is the BDK.
Okay, so I'm hearing a green and BDK to go along with his orange. And.
What, say it again?
And.
Oh, he had, I hadn't.
Yeah, yeah, he got an early vote.
He's stuck it in there. I'm not going to get that for.
You're trying to let him.
I got a long drive. I only get one, two, three votes. That's it. So I'm cutting off.
So I'll, and this is in some ways probably parochial as well, but I'll take purple. And then green, because I like the idea that we've been listening to the school boards and trying to be responsive to them. It appears that no matter which way I vote, that orange will, you know, come out as. So we've got green and orange for certain. And then it appears that BDK also is going to carry the day. So I'm willing to support that.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question about BDK.
Yes. Yeah, please help us. If we've missed something, we want to try and correct it before we go too far down the rabbit hole.
As you have visited with Utah County and Salt Lake County. School board representatives. I'm just wondering if there, I, it looks like there are many splits in BDK of districts. And I'm just wondering if there was any concern that was voiced about that or not. I mean, some have these splits.
Yes.
For sure. I just noticed that there are many splits.
So I think what we're going to do, write up our report. We are going to commentary what the schools districts have told us. So I think it's okay to have different ones, but I think we're going to give some credence to what we've been told by the school districts.
So I have an issue.
Please.
On the BDK Public School Board, when I look at South and North Summit. I see that South Summit actually has a little line that goes along the Wyoming border up to the road on Evansson. That's the strange thing about that district because that's where the oil and gas is. So South Summit gets a lot of the revenue from the oil and gas up there. I wonder why that was cut off. Now, so it would appear to me, just looking at the map, that they cut off just a tip and the numbers aren't that. So you probably can adjust it. But I, that's a question I had when I looked at it. Where is, where is all of South Summit? Because part of it was cut off.
And, well, yeah, it says there are only two people in District One. South Summit's District One portion is only two people. So I, that's.
I can't imagine. It's got very many people.
That's some kind of anomaly. Yeah.
Yeah, that could be corrected. Yeah.
Well, all the school district lines too.
Yeah. That's what it is. South Summit School District has that strip that goes east of Colville all the way to Wyoming, along the Wyoming border to Evansson Road.
So just as a reminder too, the school district lines do not follow census blocks very well, as you are aware of. So some of those cleanups will be purely like judgmental, right? How much of a block fits into that school district versus not because they do not follow the lines? So keep that in mind as well. So for example, that district that has two people in it, easy fix if we decide that. Or I guess you decide as a commission whether or not it should fall in one area or another.
It appears to me that it can be fixed. I just noted it as I saw it. It looks strange to me. So I'm familiar with that.
So I do think Commissioner Hale raises an important issue that, while the statute does not explicitly address school districts. I think in the spirit of the statute, you know, keeping school districts together, it seems to fit. Yeah.
Nothing else.
And the one issue with BDK, well, there may well be others. But an issue with BDK is it does split, you know, school districts more than, you know. Than either the purple or the Hepworth map that it does. I don't know if that raises a sufficient enough concern that if people want to revisit the issue or if they're comfortable with that map.
It's deviation several high too.
So I would recommend that if.
Yeah.
If BDK goes forward, that maybe we assign it to the purple group to do the refinement. It becomes their steward.
Now, I will note that I only see two votes from Rob up there. Did you give us a third one, Rob?
No, do you want it? How much is it worth?
And BDK.
Oh, he does have BDK?
No.
No?
So Rob.
No, the R is for Rex.
Oh, R is for Rex.
Rob gets the B for Bishop.
Oh, okay.
Some people got first names, some got last names. I don't know if anybody's offended by that, but I am.
I want the R for Rex.
I was gonna say that earlier.
Okay, so you do. We have two votes noted.
He only has, he has one safety bet.
He wants to cash it in elsewhere.
Save it for the house. Now, look, I'm sorry, but we've got two pretty consistent ones with green and orange.
Yeah.
We're going to give three maps. I think whether we do a purple or BDK, it really is sixes right now. So I. I don't care. I, maybe perhaps because we have worked longer on the purple than the BDK, maybe the purple is the one to go with. And that still gives, I mean, they're still going to give legislature some kind of flexibility in looking at these things. And even though you treated my candidate like crap, I'll still help you. For the purple map.
Rob's eloquent defense of that decision has caused me to think that I would change my vote from BDK to purple. Because of the high splits, I'm sorry, yeah, the high splits and the high deviation. But the purple's better on those two points.
Then I'm still going to demand an audit.
I'm not auditing.
That's on with the BDK. Deviation is a lot less.
It's less than purple?
Yeah, purple's got five thousand. Purple's got some pretty big deviations.
So purple does have larger deviation. But fewer cuts.
Fewer splits.
You still okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we can move one packet aside. So next we have the Senate.
What three did we end up with?
So.
Purple, green, orange.
Yes. Now, did, did we have some analysis from Moon on the Senate?
Sorry, I got delayed. Okay. So that's right. We're going to now have Moon on to talk about the analysis of these.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I can show you some analysis of the Senate plans. I'm just pulling it up.
I can't hear her very well. I'm sorry.
Can you turn up the volume just a touch, Joey?
And are we going to be able to get full screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, let's take a look at some of the Senate plans. So what I will do is share my screen.
Yes. You lose Moon?
No, here I am. I was just waiting for the screen share to clear. So let me go ahead and get us to some Senate plans. Okay, so what I'm going to show you is just some nonpartisan statistics on the Senate plans. And in particular, how they compare to maps from, you know, automated computer process and maps from the public. So here we have the three stripes that are colored here. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes.
Great. So the three colored stripes that we see here are the purple, orange, and green plans that Town and I were given to analyze. And this is showing the number of county splits that we count in those plans. Behind that, the gray bars that you see are 100,000 random plans that know only about the basic criteria. And this pale blue is plans that were received from the public. Okay, so we have public plans in blue, computer plans in gray, and commission plans in the colored stripes. And so what that shows you is, oh, and a comment on this. Last time I was with you, we talked about the fact that the computer plan seemed to have lower county splits. Partly because these were drawn with 1%, actually, in the, in the case of the Senate, it was 2% deviation. And you went for a little bit tighter deviation on your plans. So I'll talk more about that as we go. But I did do the experiment that I proposed last time where I took some plans out of the ensemble of computer plans. And then I hand tuned them to one person deviation and saw how many more, how easy it was to do and how many more counties had to be split. And the answer was for congressional plans, they can be tuned in under 10 minutes. And I had to only, each time I tried it, I only had to split about two additional counties at the congressional level. And so the numbers may differ a little bit at these levels. But I think one of the easy things to have in your mind is that the gray plans, the computer plans, have a little bit of an advantage in county splits because they're allowed a little more deviation than you are permitting yourselves. So I'm just mentioning that as a thing to hold in mind. Nonetheless, I hope this is a useful comparison. So you can see that the green team has fewer splits. Purple team has more, orange team has one more. And plans from the public are comparable and plans from the computers are comparable. Okay, I'll show you a couple more nonpartisan statistics here. So besides counting how many counties are cut, you can look at how many pieces they are cut into. So this is a little bit of a finer statistic telling you how much, you know, if you cut a county once, that's one thing. But you might be cutting it into seven pieces and that's taken into account here. But the picture is broadly similar. Computer plans have a little less splitting. Citizen plans have a little bit, a little bit more, still quite respectable. And the plans from the commission sort into the same order as before. Questions so far? Okay, let's take a look at municipalities. So if you look at the municipalities around Utah, what you see is, this picture looks a little bit differently shaped. Now there's enough options that you can see this familiar bell curve shape for the computer plans, which is exactly what you expect to see for a statistic like this. So we have a range of options found by the computer. Here, the orange plan is hitting that town split bell curve right in the middle. And the purple and green have a little more town split. So remember, green was the one with the fewest county splits, but you know, everything's a trade off. And that is accomplished with a few more town municipality. When I say town here, I mean municipality splits. So, great. And then once again, the citizen plans you see in the pale blue. Questions so far? Okay, so that's town splits. And then the same way I did before, we can also look at town pieces. And you see a broadly similar story. And don't forget, if you did want to take a look at something the computer found with very few splits, you can always just ask for it and I'll send it along. If that's something that would be useful in your refinement process. Okay, and then one more I'll show you is a compactness score.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Can you go back to that?
Sure.
If, if I look at it, the closer the line is to the middle, the better than if it's to the far right or far left. Is that right?
Oh, well, this is the, the number of pieces that towns are split into. So the best would be zero. So all the, as low as you can get it would be the best. But because there are lots of other considerations, it's perfectly reasonable to be right in the middle of the bell curve. That's, you know, that's, you should think of that as a, as a good place to be, right here in the middle of the bell curve. That's a, it's a big thumbs up from the kind of bank of computers.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm having the same problem. I can't figure out whether, for example, the green map did well or did poorly on the municipal pieces, or did higher or low.
Okay, so this means that of the three maps, of the three maps that came from the commission, green had the most town pieces, which is, in this context, not what you're going for. So the one that did the best on this metric is the orange, because it's got the lowest level. And so just, I have a lot of information.
We got a comment from Professor first.
Yeah.
And I, and I want to emphasize something Professor Duchin said, which is that you, if, if you notice, the, the winner in each criteria is different, right? These are trade offs. And so, so that it's often the case, I think the green was the best when it came to county splits, right? And so municipal splits is like, you know, and so as I, I think the first sentence I said when I worked with you is that there's no right way to redistrict, right? There, there are trade offs and you just have to navigate them. And especially if, as I understand, you're thinking about, maybe not in this context, but other context classes of, of maps, right? This is something where you say, all right, well, we've got one that respects county lines, we've got one that, that's municipal. And so that, that I think, you know, these are in the distribution, you know, if they, if, if one map is all the way off the graph in every measure, then that's something to be concerned about. But if they sort of deal with the trade offs in a different way, then that's the way to, to think about it, or at least the way that I would think about it.
That's how much you prioritize in the choices you make.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, this, with, with a law like the one that is imposed on you for this redistricting process, right? You've got conflicting impulses, right? And so how you navigate those is, is challenging. And, and this shows you statistically what those would navigate, how, how they would be navigated by the computer. And that's why the, the computer ensembles, right? If, if we, you know, picked at random five from the computer ensembles, right? They're not all going to be in the middle of the distribution, right? Some of them would be on, on the sides on, on some of them, while some of them might be in the middle, because they make the same kind of trade offs that you're doing.
Exactly. If you think the very best one.
Could you, though, tell us which of the public maps have been given, you've got three of them, is the one that's?
Is in the middle?
Or, yeah, is in the middle.
Oh, absolutely. I can, I can work that up, and I'll do that shortly. Let, let me actually make a little list so that I can show you some of these pictures, and then I can go look up detailed statistics like that. So. Oh, no, not at all. So, so which SD public plan?
Yeah.
Was fewest towns. Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure to, to chase down these questions. Right, okay, I just wanted to strongly agree with what was just said. If you grab the thing with the fewest town pieces, so it looks really good from a town point of view, it might have really bad compactness. And so what I found impressive is that the, the plans that came out of the commission, they're kind of always within range on all the different criteria, these nonpartisan criteria that I'm showing you today. Okay, so this is town pieces. One more I'll show you is cut edges. This is a compactness score. This time, I don't have the computer ensemble, and I'll tell you why in a moment. But here, we're seeing your three plans against the ones that came from the public. This is another metric for compactness, where in this case, less is better. So your plans are very comparable to the public plans in this compactness score. And I'll just take a moment and switch over to this table. Just, if you want to see the numbers behind these compactness scores, I'm showing you something called cut edges, which I explained a little bit in our last, last time I joined you. There's a more classical, I'll add a little dash for, there's a more classical compactness score called Polesby Popper, which is just about area versus perimeter. And I put them both here so you can see that they're telling the same story. In cut edges, lower is better. So orange three has the best compactness score viewed by cut edges. And in Polesby Popper, higher is better, so it also has the best compactness score viewed by Polesby Popper. So these are just two different metrics, but they're getting at the same question, which is, is your shape kind of plump? Does it have, you know, no skinny necks or long tendrils? Both of these scores are going to track with that eyeball test for, for the districts. And then just a, a quick note, this is a little technical, but let, let me say it anyway, just to be, you know, for full disclosure. You, your plans were drawn at the block level, and so you can assess these metrics at the block level. Or you can convert the plans to the precinct level, which is helpful for, for, if you want to understand kind of election, or, yeah, if you want to understand election results, you'd want to do it at the VTD level. And so we just did it both ways, and I have both available. The numbers don't change very much for the Polesby Popper score, but because the cut edge score is based on units, the world of blocks is different from the world of, of precincts, AKA VTDs. So small note on why you might see different numbers flying around, but ask me anytime if, if you want to a kind of check on the units. Okay, so this is the, the, the cut edges world. That's, those are the, those are the nonpartisan comparisons for the Senate plans. So maybe I'll pause there before looking at House plans or anything else.
Hey, terrific. Thank you, Moon.
Okay, did we get the answer to your question on the public?
No, but it was okay.
Okay. Yeah, we were still curious, I think, about.
Which of the plans?
Yep, I'm going to, I'm going to go dig that up right now while you talk about your next topic. It'll take me a few minutes, but I'll find it.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll start our discussion then on the Senate maps. And a similar process to what we went through before. If you have a map or maps that you would like to suggest that move forward, I encourage you to go ahead and do that now. Karen was first out of the gate last time, so we don't have to make her go first again.
Yeah, somebody else's turn.
So if, I'll go ahead and start off, since I'm not hearing anybody else, yeah, jump to the floor. So the three maps that I'd like to suggest moving forward, at, at least for me, were the purple, green, and orange. With the caveat that on the green map, although it's depending on which of these scores we looked at, so the counties, yeah, came out really good. But I'm wondering if, if we can't clean up a few of the, of the city splits. You know, there's, for example, in Nibley, there are four people that were left out. Just a few of those kinds of things that I think could be cleaned up if, if you haven't already done it.
That stuff will be watching for it in the GIS cleanup.
Yeah, it's, it's that very small number means it's probably a GIS split. Those things will come out in the wash and the cleanup process. So, anything else that you're concerned about with green?
No.
Oh, may I ask a question too on the green? So, yeah, with those, those numbers, the really small numbers, I think those can easily be cleaned up. Would you be willing to, to check some, for instance, I see Roy has 86. And this is on the Green Senate, and on the city splits. So there were a few that were still under 100, but still higher than, than four. Would you be willing to? Popper, Elk Ridge, South Bogdan has 16.
Fruit Heights.
Yeah, just a few of those, because I, I, I would fall for this map as well, to be one of the three, if we could just pick some of those city splits.
Would, would we be comfortable going back and figuring those out? Oh, on the green map, talking again about the numbers, to district numbers on some of the splits where you've got 12 in Tupperboro. We talked about the four in Nibley, nine in Heber City. Figure out all of those.
Very open to making those suggestions.
Yeah, and Jeff's the one to do it.
Can I, can I ask a question? Body here.
They should be on there.
First page.
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
They should be.
For the teens, I see, but I don't see them for the.
Some of them had two on a page.
Oh, yeah, is that theirs?
So if it's a public map, there are two on a page on some.
So you went for the orange and the green so far. Do you have a third yet?
Can I just ask the rest of this commission on the public, the public maps that have been sent in there? To be honest, I am looking at, the only one I actually feel like I support is JE. But am I missing anything? Do the rest of you have an opinion on public ones?
I was going to go forward and plan to before the TD public.
You're, you're looking at JE, is that what you were saying?
TD.
Oh, TD.
Well, Rob said JE.
Okay.
And Jeff said TD.
What am I, what am I not seeing or seeing in these maps?
You know, I, I felt like on the JE, there were, and we were judging by pages, there were over two pages of city splits.
Yeah, it was, it was the longest one of all of the city splits. I did know that, that San Juan went with West Counties and not with Grand. Somebody, that would make somebody happy.
Yes.
I mean, it was, it was kind of an innovative map in the way it dealt with southeastern. I don't, I don't know if it was innovative in a good way or. Good, I also liked, well, now I can't tell, they've got Cedar City in a different district from St. George.
It was one of the Senate maps that had a Cedar City. A donut. I think that was.
That was a house.
That was a house.
Here you've got a St. George donut, and the orange 1.2.
Yes, which, which maps are we talking about?
The Senate maps.
Which one?
The Senate maps, yes.
Which, which one?
So, well, Rob raised a question on the JE. And he was wondering if, you know, he said he kind of liked it, wondered if there was something other people were seeing that they didn't like.
I don't like JE. I'll tell you why. It's the fact that they put, I, I really think you need to tie Grand and San Juan County together, because people travel down there, they'll go. I guess you can drive down to, across Nevada and get in there, but I think those, those counties, especially that one area, of course, this is a school district, school kids there. I look at JE and I look how they've divided Logan and Cache County and put part of it into all the way to, to Uena and Basin up there. You can't get from there to, to that area unless you go through Wyoming or you go through all the other areas. The way it now is, that area is tied into Weber County, because it's fairly easy to go up Weber Canyon into Morgan and then service those areas there. So those are things on JE that I didn't like at all. And the Green Senate map had kind of the same problem in the aspect of how they've, they've got District Three, goes all the way across. And I think also, you know, I don't know if Grand County is going to be happy to be tied to Eternal and the Basin and not with the West and, and price. That's really their natural price down there. And I look at the green map, and it has that problem with it. So I, I just look at the green map and JE public, those, especially on that eastern basin, were, were my concerns.
Yeah, although, you know, I, I thought it was interesting that when we were down in San Juan County, we heard kind of mixed views on some, you know, it said go west and others said go north. And I think, you know, Karen and I settled on going north in, in the purple map.
We heard the same in Moab.
But, yeah.
Whether to go west or north.
Yeah. I think that did note that one of the things on the, the Green Senate map, I was thinking that if we are going to have the dividing line there, I would suggest carving out the Spanish Valley.
On the Senate?
Even on the Senate map, because they said that they viewed that as part of their community. Commissioner Bishop doesn't feel strongly about that, too. Or maybe he doesn't feel strongly about that.
Mr. Chair, along those lines too, perhaps even on the Green Senate, I'm adding another piece of, of the tribal map. It's just south of Chula.
We don't have it.
I wonder if we're looking.
Well, no, I drew that.
Oh, you drew that?
Yeah.
That's why you have it.
Yes, that's why I have it. And Commissioner Bishop doesn't like it, so. The others.
I struggled at doing the Senate maps. In going through all of these, I, I, this is, was my scoring system. I scored one to 10, 10 being the best. My highest score on the Senate maps was a five, and that was the green plan. And then the next, then I had two others at four each, and those are the ones I want to put forward.
Okay.
But I had some, and, and this goes across congressional and House and School Board plans too. I knocked them down to one. I think I struggled the most with the Senate plans. They were not easy.
Notwithstanding how low your scores are, what are the top three?
You said green.
Yes, green, purple, and the TD. Green, purple, and TD. Orange, purple, and SH.
Orange, purple, SH.
Mine is, my count too. Sure, purple, orange, and SH.
We wanted diverse opinions, so it should be.
Yeah. Okay, I, purple, green, and TD. And your handwriting is so much easier for you.
Ouch.
Gordon has many other towns.
We're looking for them.
That city will be happy to.
I know, happy to see a little bit of payback.
So Commissioner, Bishop?
All right, I'll get it. Let's get it over with. I don't like any of them, to be honest with you, but I'll, if you wanted a voice, a vote for any of you convinced me on JE, because I like that better than the other two, so screw them all. So it's orange, purple, and green. Actually, orange, I have to admit, is the one that comes closest to what I like. But green and purple have some good things in there, and they also have, when you go back there, quit hurting Fruit Heights and Katesville, and other than that, you're okay.
So Karen is orange, purple, and green.
And with, with some tweaking, I think I could really support them. T version.
Hi, everybody?
Yeah. Okay. Move on to the House now. Move on to the House map. Are there going to be fruit snacks for the team that gets the most maps?
If you get the most maps, you've got the most work to do.
There is truth in that.
Yeah, there is.
So we still have to be stewards of all of these maps.
All right, we ready to talk about House maps?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's do it. So, what do we have here? Okay, so let's do the same view of the House maps. So we'll start with county splits again. So this time we have five color-coded maps in the mix. But I believe for the House, there were only three maps from the public that, that we were comparing. So when you see these bars, this is one public map and this is the other two. Okay, and so the picture is, you know, here's the bell curve of computer plans. So we're getting usually 10 to 16 county splits for House maps. The citizen plans have 13 and 16. And the plans, the, the color-coded plans have, the numbers are listed over here because sometimes they hide behind each other a little bit. So 14 for green, so green once again, just as it was for the Senate plan, green is really doing great on county splits. And three of the plans all have 16, so purple one, purple two, and orange three. And then orange one has, has more county split. So this is the.
Green three I want to throw out.
Okay.
Well, I'll explain why. Yeah, I want to check with them on which one of the purple maps, because I think we did want to just stick with this.
All right, so moving on to the slightly finer view, which is county pieces. You see now that things are just spread out a little more as you'd expect because one county is split, it's split into multiple pieces. So it sort of looks like a stretched out copy of the other picture. In this metric, green is still best of the colored team plans. And now the ensemble is, is kind of pulling ahead a little bit of, the computer ensemble is pulling ahead a little bit of the human efforts. And the citizen maps are, are quite comparable to the top three color maps. Okay? Questions about the county pieces? All right, and now let's look at towns. So town splits, these are the number of municipalities that are split at all. And so this time, orange one is a little bit ahead of green one because again, the same trade-off phenomenon we were talking about before. Orange three, which I just heard someone nominate for exclusion, is, is indeed in last in the statistic. Here's purple one, purple two, computer ensemble, the three citizen maps. And right now, as, as we speak, Ty and I are also behind the scenes trying to do the little decoding of which citizen map is which. So we'll get you that as soon as we're able to, to get that on the spot tonight. So that's how the, the split municipalities look. Compactness, let's take a look. And here we see that the green plan is the most compact because remember again, low is good for cut edges. Because this is the scissors complexity metric telling you how hard it was to cut out the plants. So we have green and then the two purples, and then the two oranges in this compactness metric. And this time the citizen plans did quite well, so they come out as on the, on the compact side of the spectrum, all three of the, of the citizen plans. Okay, I'd be happy to open these back up or put some of them side by side or take any questions about these. All right.
Hey, thank you, Moon. And I will note, thank you especially given that it's 11 o'clock back in Boston, so.
It sure is.
Before we get into these, from our public hearings, there were two things that I really want to take a look at. I don't, I'm looking now, all the House maps include Roosevelt with Uena County. You remember we had former Senator Snow who made the presentation that Uena County ought to go south into Grand County. And leave Roosevelt where he lives in District by itself. And, and I don't, I mean, we looked at it, I don't think there's really any way you can do it because, oh, you could go down to Grand County. There's that big mountain range, booklets between them. And then I, I sensed in our meeting in Moab, they weren't very excited about having their district going with Uena County. So I raised that first issue. I don't know if I saw one, a map anywhere that addressed that issue about Roosevelt being separate from rural. The other was Clearfield. I looked quickly, so Clearfield's divided three ways and four ways. And if they were divided that way before, they're not, I think we ought to do what we can to put Clearfield in a, in a city that somebody living. I didn't get a chance to check all that out, but that's, I just raised those issues for you.
I, I will note that Clearfield in the purple map is only in two districts, one of which is 37,000. So they'd have a, a good, a, a good shot in that.
I live in Clearfield, I have to mow my grass in two different districts.
Put you out of the town. Which map did you say?
That purple. Now, I, I will note that the purple map that you have here has actually been redone. Because of the comments that we heard in Logan. And so the, the Cache County portion is, is not correct anymore. So I don't know, could we pull up the, the new purple one just so people can see the, the new Cache County?
New and improved, so when you say the one we have here is, that has since been redone.
This has since been redone, yes.
We'll put your name on the hit list.
So I, I must admit that it was both the public comment as well as the comment from Commissioner Hilliard that got us to rethink this, this map. Now again, I, I can't, I can't swear until you find this one far more attractive, but. We, we did make the effort.
I do, I do that. That's the natural way it is now.
Okay.
Okay, so you moved, what did you do?
We have a bow tie kind of that. From part of Box Elder, didn't that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to go up a little so we can see. So it's changed a lot. Yeah, we need to go, we need to go a little more so we can see.
What have you got? Okay, so we have Garland and Tremont.
Yes. Yes, Garland and Tremont were the Box Elder sacrificed.
You don't know anybody that lives there, do you?
Nobody with a lawn.
Better hope you don't.
So Lyle, did that solve your problems?
It, it leaves it about like it is now, although I think the boundary between Box Elder or the district on South 21. And, and 20 is the Bay River. And so everything west of the Bay River, which comes in by Cornish and then leaves Newton. Was basically put in the Tremont area because that's the natural trajectory. But I, I don't think there were enough people. I think we, we had to do, we had to expand.
Yeah.
Think more than that, but that was the idea.
But your existing map also splits Brigham City down Main Street.
Lyles or purple?
The existing one.
Oh, oh, the existing one, okay.
Does split Brigham City down Main Street, so it's not just the Bay River.
So, and, and, and we did leave Brigham City whole and leave. I will note that in looking at the House maps, there were a lot more city splits.
I just have a concern that deviations start getting big in small districts.
Uh huh.
I mean, some of them are approaching 1,000 people. Districts are only, what, 46?
Forty-three thousand, yeah.
Thousand. You're trying to get in deviations of 1,000, that's, that's a lot of people.
Well, it does give you inflexibility in maintaining.
Flexibility, but it's.
Yeah.
So I, I guess that does raise an interesting question. If, if we get to the House maps. How, how big a deviation are we willing to tolerate?
Maybe there's a group that's really tight and group is a little looser, but more you can do them all tight.
I'll reiterate the comments that Gordon made a couple of days ago. If we have large deviations, it's, it's acceptable. But you better have a very good reason for going that high with the deviation. A very, very good reason. But if that very, very good reason is there, then go with it.
Sure, let me add to what Lyle said about Roosevelt, which is significant. And maybe you need to ask me if, if orange three is actually the only one that doesn't, that respects Roosevelt, keeps Duchesne County. Because Roosevelt is cut in all of those, and I would mention that once again only because in the last redistricting, Duchesne was the buck, the buckle.
Right.
Duchesne is the one that just split into three counties. Duchesne's effort to actually have somebody represent them will only happen if Roosevelt is with Duchesne. But as Lyle noticed, all of these except for orange three, put Roosevelt in with, with Uena County. And I understand why. I mean, we did, we did ours, we did the same thing, but that was before we went to Roosevelt.
True.
When we actually drew that. So it, it's a problem that comes with all of them. And. As far as the rural part, that's the biggest, that's the biggest problem because Duchesne was screwed over last time.
Yeah, let, let me just speak a concern about orange, orange three. When Commissioner Thorne and I did that, we started with premise that we wanted to put Park City. Together and with Salt Lake because they could, or maybe with, with Los Angeles County because they said they didn't want to be with the eastern part of Summit County. But when you put, when you do that, and we, I think we did it in that, you then force Rich County to go into, into Cache. And you force Morgan County to go either Rich or into Weber County. And I just felt like that was a step I didn't want to take. I think Rich County ought to be with Cache, all right, but I think Morgan, especially a house seat, I don't know if it's big enough to hold its own. And I think that's part of the rural urban that we have to look at is to get a county so small. That really doesn't tie, I mean, I'm sure there's people in Morgan County who work. So I read, that's why I said I'm not really excited about, about three. But I think that's how we ended up doing this. I mean, where you start, that's.
Yeah, where you start mapping.
Where you start mapping, where you come out. But I think one of the problems, if I may add this too, they were concerned that Duchesne County was cut three ways. And I think if we cut it just twice, now it's not as good, but you put them on one, you're right, then Roosevelt wouldn't, wouldn't be able to control that. But I think the problem you have, they're in the wrong place with too few populations.
That's interesting.
That's part of the challenge of many of the parts of rural Utah.
Yeah, the, the public map, SH, only splits Duchesne once.
Yeah, so they do very similar thing to what most of the other. Yeah, if you'd like to, to throw yours into the mix.
I would rank them, I put green one as number one and purple, but the change you've talked about is number two. That's only, the other, the rest of them really have, well, I put orange one because it does, you know, they're split Cache County up in such a way that. That it's going to be really hard, I think, for the, for the people there to understand how you drew them that way.
So green, purple, and orange?
Yeah, I'd order green, purple, and orange.
Okay.
Which, which orange?
Orange one.
Orange one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Why consider the range is that it's almost 1,000 deviation? That's when you're looking at 43,000 per district, that just seems too high to me.
Maybe I put it in that when whoever drafted the green committee goes back and see if they can cut that deviation down to 50 or 100. I agree with you.
So I would put orange one and three as very different ideas. But what keeps Duchesne County whole? Doesn't move Duchesne, Roosevelt into Eternal. But I put purple two, three.
Okay.
Do you like both oranges?
Yes.
Both the oranges and the purple.
And I would suggest this too, whatever the three maps are, we go back as a committee, there are people drafting. And see if there's some way we can hold, hold Clearfield in some normal semblance and do something about Roosevelt if we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My comment on green?
Yeah.
A couple of things we did, the Cedar City unit area, we made that.
Well, that's the, that's the donut hole, okay.
But we kept that community very strongly together. And another thing that we did is in the Ogden area, there's a fairly solid Hispanic population in that area. And we drew the boundaries, I think it was south of 12th Street or along 12th Street. And west of Harrison Boulevard to keep that Hispanic community together. And so those are a couple of the strong points of, of green. Yes, population or the deviation is a bit high. Say a bit, even though it's.
Yeah, although I think you'll, we'll find when we go back to it, that it was to preserve city and county.
We, we very strongly focused on keeping city boundaries, so and then county boundaries for that too.
So I, I will note that's about a 5% deviation.
Yeah, it's within, it's within the guidelines. It's, I mean, it's within the premises. Still, I mean, I know.
But it's, it's higher, but, yeah. So, but just to give us some context of what that range gives that we're talking about, so.
Green team is offering to try to reduce the deviations.
Okay.
There goes your Saturday and Sunday. I'll give you my three.
Okay.
So green. Purple. And the TD map.
I, I will go with orange three and green and purple. Right, and green and purple.
When did Jeff say TD, what?
This TD, yeah.
It's TD public, yeah.
All right, this is still a lousy way of doing this, but. With due respect to orange three, I don't really like what you did in either Cache or Box Elder. So if we have to vote this way, it's amazing because there were possibly on all of these. Because I don't like any of them. So I'll go with the purple, the green, and the orange one.
Well, I have a question, Rob, do you have a better way to do this?
Orange one.
Orange, yes. Well, we have one week.
And I'm the same set that Rob gets.
But orange was.
Yep, green and purple. Yeah.
Karen?
So I'm orange one. Purple, which I think is two point three on this, but actually two point four.
Two point four, yeah.
And green one.
So, yeah, yeah. So, so I, you might change that to purple two point four, just to be clear that, because two point four contains the corrected Cash County.
Yes.
So on these, the, the green team is going to go and take it down from a thousand deviation, so that's.
About a hundred, is that what they said?
Yeah, they're gonna do it to twelve.
Yes.
Were there, were there other conditions that were sort of, I think, one of the teams was gonna look at, everybody was gonna look at Roosevelt and Clearfield. So every, these are all approved, subject to making those two a consideration to look at it.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question.
Please, make sure he'll.
As I looked at this, I tried to, in my mind, say, what are three different approaches to the House district and three different approaches to the Senate district? I found them all different. I don't really, I think the congressional, clearly we can talk about
Yeah.
But I couldn't see any real difference in the Senate and the House, but with B Marquise.
Yeah, not a pattern that, that I could see, but, you know, they are at the same time different.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and maybe that is the, the different philosophy between each of them, we got it in a different place. All right.
So, so let me, let me ask you a question before we write all these down. Talk about themes. Want to try to identify theme before we list them here. We're not voting everyone's head, we're voting against the theme. So I'm throwing that out, because that way, I think, because there's some maps that are very, very close, and there are other maps that are quite a bit different. And I can, I, and these, you can tell apart the House, like it's hard for us to see a theme. The ones that want this, these, you can see patterns, themes here, so I'm asking you a little permission for thoughts.
Well, I'm having a very hard time, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm having a very hard time thinking about themes, because as we discuss the maps, people say, okay, there's a problem up in northern Utah here, and other people say there's a problem with what happened in southwestern Utah. And then other people say there's a problem with what happened with southeastern Utah. And then what did you do at the basin, and what did you do with Utah County? And those aren't themes.
Right, no, and that's what I'm saying, there's some themes of the other ones, but on, on the congressional, what I do see happening is there's a theme where you may make a complete urban district. And then there's another one, click the complete urban district, but just change location and change the spread. So there may be two or three that are with a single urban district, and, and that, those three, could send all three of those in. But no, I'm not saying that. You may consider not sending all three of those in, because they have that closer.
It's fine to consider it, but I, I remain free to vote against a theme.
So, so I'm asking, that had been discussed, and so I wanted to just before, so I didn't want all ten here, maybe you pick two that are basically close.
Well, that's a process of narrowing it down, and.
And we can put all the lists down there, just now, down there, if that's. So I'm not predicting the path.
Right. If, please.
I would suggest that those of us who have now built our map selected, that we find to, to prepare for, our thinking is we went together to put it together. I think that would help. I think one of the problems we have, and I, there are, there are some here I can't support. I mean, if I were gonna vote on the floor of the Senate, I would vote no. I can tell you that very clearly, but my job, according to the initiative, is to submit to the legislature three proposals. Now, if I say I'm only gonna submit one, because that's the only one I support, I think I'm not following the spirit of the initiative that they wanted three submitted. And so I, that's, I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna vote for some here to put on the list, that if I were to vote, I'd say, no, I don't support it, I won't say that publicly, as, as, because I think we need to be somewhat unified here, because we'd just tear everything up if I said, well, I don't agree with Karen, because she did something wrong, or whatever, and, because I can say that, because I know I never would. But I, I just say that, as we do this thing together, I think it's gonna be important for the legislature to see different, that's what the initiative said. Said three maps of each of these four areas. Didn't say we actually prioritize them, didn't say they all had to be the same, or different, or whatever, and I think that makes sense to me. Like, it told Karen, I'm glad I don't have a final vote. I mean, these twelve will go up, and, and I, I think once we put them up and start fine tuning, so they know, now these are the twelve we're looking at, they can come back and say, I don't like this part, I don't like this part of the bill, and we suggested changes. I would hope that we end up changing all of them, as we get more public input. Why'd you say that?
Yeah. And, and I agree with that, but, but just as we have resolved differences thus far with the majority vote of the commission, I don't think we're gonna get consensus on very many maps we have.
On almost the map, yeah.
Certainly on all of them, and so I, I don't have any problem with the notion that we, we may disagree with each other in our choice of maps. And I think it's fine to vote and find out and go with the majority.
I think it's easy to try and get consensus, if you put a package of three different approaches. And say, I may not like that third approach, but as a package of giving the legislature three clear choices, I could support that.
Yeah, but you and I just disagree on that bill, flat out. I don't think that I want to vote to give the legislature a map that I think actually does not meet our criteria, and that it violates some of the principles that, that I've been mapping under. So, I mean, I, I agree with, you think that's a good idea, I don't. And I think we go with the majority vote when we get to individual maps.
And I think we should do that, that the one concern I have is there may be groups that like the, and I'll try to strike, so we have likely one urban district, and we have three of those, so all three votes are for that. That one might, if that's the one they prefer, so basically they're all pushing those same identical. Well, in reality, you, it may be valuable to let them split up their vote into other, other ones that may be, I'm not saying that's the right approach, but I wanted to just suggest that if we put up all the maps together, you like a certain style of map, you may be hoping for that same style, three kind, it just.
There's, there, there's far more of each type of map than three, in all categories, so I don't, I don't really, I don't see that as a problem.
If that, if that's the, the will of the commission, I'm more happy to have some of the good handwriting.
Actually, no, let me say something here, that's not the will of the commission, at least on this side. I've been very vocal about this, that I think an urban district, or a strictly, a totally rural district is a mistake. Mistake for the state, mistake for a delegation. But I'd be more than happy to put an urban district on there, as one of the things for the legislature to look at, if you also have something that puts urban and rural together on, on that map, because that is the important thing to do. We also have an obligation in the law to look at the, look at the core of these districts. I think that's one of the things we should not just forget, because it doesn't seem consistent. And we've talked about deviations, this is where the deviation becomes critical. I don't think anyone is going to sue on a state school board map that has five hundred deviation. Ten deviation here, somebody will sue. And if we have found that there are ways of mapping this thing with a deviation that was lower, there's no way of being able to defend that. So I, what Judge Thorne is talking about, I agree. I think we need to give three distinct approaches to it. But as I'm said, and time and time again, I'm gonna go down to my grave saying it, if you don't, and we had this in the testimony today, as somebody talked about rural and urban, and then somebody talked about why it's important to have urban and rural together. But if we don't have that, we don't do our job. And if we don't have that, this may be a million dollars.
But it seems to me, Rob, that you have to convince a majority of the commission of that point of view, that is not a given.
No, I have to convince the majority of the legislature.
No, our job is not to convince legislature, our job is to do what the statute says we should do. We will write our report, we'll explain our rationale and our reasons. And, you know, if, if all we came here to do was to do maps that we knew the legislature was gonna love, that's, that wasn't our job, that's not why we.
But the reality is still, if we put three maps with only urban districts on there,
And we may not end up there.
We will not have a consensus, and we will not be able to fulfill our responsibility.
And we may not end up there, but I'm, I'm really pushing back against the notion that we start out with those categories. I think, I think that's a philosophical decision about how redistricting should be done in this state, and what benefits the citizens. And yes, we have one comment tonight about urban rural. And I have to tell you, I've been listening very carefully all over the state, and other than your very eloquent assertions, I haven't heard anybody in a rural district say we wanna be with urban people, and I haven't heard anybody in an urban district say they want to vote with rural.
Yes, you have. There are so many, there are special interests that are out there that are trying to force us to do it. I, like, I am tired of having people say, I want my voice heard, when they don't mean I want my voice heard. They mean, I want my candidate elected, and I want you as a commission to carry man to the lines to make sure that happens. Sometimes that is not the appropriate way of doing it.
Well, of course it's not, who wants to do it that way?
I, I'm sorry, you understand, there's a way we can actually go forward to bring something that can go to the legislature with the unified votes. But if we don't give them three distinct, different types of maps.
And I think there's a valid discussion and debate on a map by map basis. I just object to the notion that somehow something gets a free place on the list without considering the majority vote of the commission, which is what the statute says controls.
You're right, so we don't get a donut hole.
I feel like the matador between the two.
With your red scarf.
I'm between them.
Yeah, I think, I think you chose to sit there, Jeff.
I'll give you my three congressional votes right now. Purple, okay, I'm voting right now, I'm just gonna get that away.
Okay, so, okay, we're, we're, so I found, I, Rob was a bad one, I'm gonna go with the correct. Your first, I see it's your right December, yeah, I stopped it. You're trapped, so now I know. So, um, you do have some more analysis that we can show you, if you'd like to see that full start.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that.
Okay, well, let's do that. Hello, ready?
Okay. No, no, this is, this is absolutely excellent entertainment. Okay, um, so I, I'd like to do a couple of things. First, I'd like to start with the congressional nonpartisan data demonstration that looks just exactly the same as it did for the other two. And then anticipating this conversation about urban and rural, have a couple of data demonstrations about that as well. Okay, so first, we'll start with the nonpartisan stats, and we'll begin with counties. So let's look at the county splits. Okay, so now we have five plans from the colored teams. They are two orange plans, two purple plans, and a green. And, um, what you see here is that the computer ensemble in gray, as usual, as usual, the computer ensemble does a kind of bang-up job of keeping counties whole. So two split counties is the most frequent outcome for the hundred thousand random plans. The blue ensemble is the one that comes from public. This time there were more of them, so twenty-five public plans are included in the blue. And you see that their number of county splits, they also get one, two, and three, and go up to as many as eight. And the plans from the color teams here have four, five, six, and seven. Um, and so this time it's green one and purple two, three, that have the fewest split counties at four. And.
Picture. The, what would, can you move the picture?
Oh, oh, oh.
About on the top, it sucks the.
The, where the, yep, that one.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so, uh, so again, purple two, three, and green one, that split just four counties, and then just a few more for the others. And here, I'll remind you, this is the setting in which I did the experiment earlier today, or was it yesterday, the days are boring again, in redistricting season. So this is where I did the experiment of taking some plans from the computer ensemble and tuning them by hand till they had one person deviation, or I think it got down to one person in one plan, and down to three people in the other. And, um, that took a short amount of time, and it added two to the county splits in, in both of the instances that I tried. So you should maybe think about this gray ensemble here, shifting by two if you went down to perfect balance. And so I think what that shows you is that, uh, this green and purple, you should think of this as an excellent outcome, splitting only four counties while getting very tight population balance, uh, and the others not far behind. Okay, so if there's no questions about that, I'll, as before, go to county pieces now. And similar story. Uh, so the plans are in the same order, and if you want the exact number of split, of pieces, it's over here. Okay, and then we'll look at municipalities. So if we look at municipality splits, now everything's much more bunched together, it's no longer the, the case that the computer ensemble is kind of out ahead of the rest of the pack. And we've got the, um, the citizen plans and the commission plans, and now everything is kind of all grouped together, but you can see that now it's the two purple plans that look the best on this metric of split towns. Questions? All right, and then once again, we'll move to pieces. And, um, very similar picture, a little more spread out. I'll leave that up for a moment, see if you have any questions. So the two purple plans split municipalities into the smallest number of pieces, which means they're doing the best on this metric. But all the plans are really in, you know, that kind of bulk of the ensemble, so all the plans are, look, you know, as good as, you know, computer plans that were made out of whole precincts and trying to keep counties whole, and doing a good job keeping towns whole at the same time. Okay, uh, let's take a quick look at compactness. So here's the compactness comparison of the, uh, the citizen plans against the, the color plans that, that, that you made. And you can see that in compactness terms, it's actually orange three, three, that's best, uh, because small is good. Orange two, three has the most cut edges, which means it's the most complex and windy. And I think I also have in here, let me check, yeah. Yeah, I just, they're not superimposed, but this is a comparison against the, the computer ensemble of the same statistic, cut edge score. Um, and so we see that, um, uh, orange beats more than half of the computer plans. Orange, orange three over here beats more than half the computer plans, while orange two is in the kind of least compact tail of a distribution that was designed to be compact. Okay, um, questions about those, otherwise I'll, I'll stop there.
So one of the things we did today is I spent some time with Nate, and he has spent some time with Moon, and we, we talked about this idea of rural urban district. And, you know, what does it mean, what's a metric? And so one of the things we did, um, he's gonna explain. And so one of the things we did, he's gonna explain what we did.
Okay, part of what I'd like to do is is get some input from you all as to how you're thinking about the urban rural balance, like what exact, I mean, besides eyeballing it on a map, how do you think about what is a balance? Because I, I pre, so here's one way of thinking about it, right? Which is that you want, it's about a a plan for which there are no purely urban districts. Is that fair? That that's just, just, just trying to define what what exactly you're trying to get at. Because the 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 one, because this is in comparison to the ones that have either one or two largely urban districts. And so the question is, a class of plans in which each one of the all four districts have something of a urban rural balance, is that the fair, in the way, okay, and so thinking about how to do that then is challenging. So so one way we could look at that is to evaluate the plans. And I said, when I say evaluate the plans, we define a class of plans that you think are worth considering that are the lowest population density for all four districts, right? So the lowest average density, right? Because you don't want, because some of these would actually have, you know, you you might might have some that are very low, like rural districts. You don't want segregation, is basically, I think, the way that you was thinking about, that you have rural districts and urban districts. And so what you could do is say, all right, what's the average, the lowest average density? Which is to say people per square mile, or something like that, or in, a- a- across all four districts, right? And so you take the average of that, and then you can rank the plans that way, and you can determine those are the class of plans. Now, of course, then you, 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 you know, if one of them ends up being, you know, splitting all kinds of counties and everything, you you would toss that out. But trying to just kind of get a sense of what, of the way of thinking about this balance issue, yeah.
It doesn't really meet what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
And that's the fact that, what, 66% of our state is owned by the federal government. That land is basically out on the east, some on the west, some in my area on the north. And I think if you do that, then you miss the thing that, that I think that should be an important consideration for every congressman because of that federal ownership. If you live in Salt Lake, if you don't get that oil and gas lease money, or you don't get the rental money of the basin, what I hear today, they're getting 900, almost 100 million dollars from SITL to lands to schools, from this public land that we own out there, that comes to the schools of all across the state of Utah. So that's important to me, that we look at that. And and so I, in my own mind, I look at the urban areas as Weber County, Davis County, Salt Lake, and Utah. I could throw in Logan, I could throw in St. George, because they're basically business oriented. They don't have a lot of farms. There's farms located, obviously, in all of those areas. But like, there's business located in Richfield and in some of those areas, Brigham City, that are not really part of this. So as I look at it, and I think it bothers me when I hear people say, we don't want rural legislators, rural, rural people telling us, no matter how you divide it, the urban areas, if you divide it by those four counties, are gonna make up 75% of the district. So there's no way that you're gonna, unless you do the completely around that kills everybody off, you're gonna have a district where you're gonna have any more than than 30%, like, gonna be defined rural by my definition of these four counties plus those two cities.
Well, count me out with what your definition is of rural. So how can we, without looking at individual maps, right, just what the principle is of of the mix that you want in all four districts? Because as I understand it, the distinguishing feature here is that that for this third class of plans, you don't want to have any, any district that is primarily urban. Is that fair?
I I view it this way, that there're gonna be four districts. And those four districts are all gonna have to be based in these, these four counties I'm talking about. But I think every one of those districts needs to have some rural content to it so that they represent the the state of Utah, that their area, because their area, Hillfield, for example, that's a major player. And we, you know, we're gonna have the full delegation in support of that. Because if we lost Hillfield, it would be a major, you know, the public. And so I, that's why I look at, I look at those four as being the the bedrocks of the of the four districts, of four congressmen. And then each of those four should have some of the areas outside of those four counties.
So then it's, but so I'm trying to establish a measure based on this, which is not just about particular districts that one might have in mind. So if, that's why I thought the density measure kind of gets at it, because ultimately, you're going to be saying that this is the optimal mix. You're essentially gonna wanna create four of the most, it's gonna measure as the four of the most rural districts, but they're gonna end up being, because of population, they're gonna have to draw, draw from the the city. The problem is that if you, you the distinguishing feature of those districts, right, of that class of districts, is that none of them are wholly within one of the the cities, right? And so trying to think mathematically about what, how to achieve that, it seems to me that you wanna basically make all four of them as as non-dense as possible. But but that's why I'm trying to, if if we start getting into like the federal land question or something like that, that then it, then it sounds like then there's particular districts one has in mind. Whereas the principle, as I understand it, is is trying to make sure that there's a mixture of urban and rural.
I hope I'm looking at your question the right way. If we were to look at population density, that would have to be computer generated.
Yeah.
And in so doing, we, it would overlay the state, and it would kind of more or less dissolve or forget about county boundaries, city boundaries, the population is distributed. And it would cause us to look at a statistic that that I would be interested in, but I would not want it to be a high criteria.
Part of this is to to not make the density criterion the only criterion, but to define this class of plans that he's talking about. That that seems to me to be, and then within those, you can then say, all right, if, you know, if 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 the the most rural, the the least dense plan ends up splitting the most counties, you just take it out. Right? But but that that's just what I'm trying to figure out.
That's what I'm saying, is it would possibly dilute the the human interpretation of Utah, the way each of us see the state.
That's possible. I mean, you know, and so we have to just look at the plan. And and we'd have to look, I mean, part of it is to come up with a principle before we look at the maps. I can tell you other times when I, when I've done this, you know, and it sometimes has perverse results, you know, but if we, if we look at it, and we say, all right, well, what what we're trying to achieve here in terms of balance is something like this measure. And then we take the top 10 plans or whatever according to that measure, and then we say, all right, well, how well did they do against the other criteria? Like county splits, city splits, and the like.
So you're saying use it, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you go ahead.
You're saying use it as a criteria.
Yeah, it can't be the only, it can't be the only one, because if it leads to breaking the other.
Criteria, but a factor.
Yeah.
In how we evaluate the state.
That is, if you're going to go with this class-based approach, right? And so, and I understand there's some dissent about whether whether to do that. But you may find, right, that if you go into this class-based approach, that there's one that's satisfied this criterion that I'm articulating, and also does well on the city and county splits or something like that.
Well, how does this interface, though, this notion, how does it interface? I wanna pick up on Jeff's comment about the way we live life in Utah. Utah has this huge open lands with very few people living, who live a completely different lifestyle from the people in the populous counties towards the north. And the the concerns, the discussions, everybody cares about Utah as a whole. And I really think it's a little cynical to suggest that congresspeople won't represent their state and not just their district. But, you know, that, maybe I'm wrong about that. But I don't under, I mean, when you look at density in Utah, 85% of Utah's population lives, works, plays, and and lives their lives along the Wasatch Front in those counties. So there's a degree to which you dilute the influence of those people in the way the state is going to be run if you insist on this medium density for all the congressional districts. They just don't have, well, nobody really has any singular representation. But I think the more urban parts of the state lose much more than the rural. Now, maybe I'm wrong about that.
All right, so that that's a normative argument about like what, whether this is, you know, a desirable principle. And so I understand that there's a difference of opinion on this. I'm literally trying to.
How you pick that up?
Because you see, what I'm, what I'm trying to do here is to, is to introduce some unpredictability into this, just because I don't know what the answer's going to be. And so, and so if if this, I'll give you an example from another experience that where I've done this, which, first of all, I did, I did use density recently in Maryland for a different reason, which was to deal with whether they were gonna have multi-member districts or single-member districts in certain areas. They, it's a different thing than Utah. And, you know, it turns out that did settle a a controversy there. In addition, when I, when I've done, when there've been times in Georgia, when I did the districts and ignored incumbency, and then the, when, because the court told me to, then they said, oh, now, now we've heard you've basically paired half the incumbents in the state against each other. It's like, oh, okay. They said, now incorporating incumbency in a wholly nonpartisan way, to which I put my head in my hands. It's like, how do you do that? And and but without looking at the map, I said, well, if there's a incumbent pairing and there's an open seat next to it, I'll draw the most geographically proximate incumbent, right? But without looking at the map, so that then that sort of ties me, you know, to a principle. And so this is an example of a principle that you could take to define the, you're not committing to a map right now, right? It's it's just about whether you think, now, you could say, look, I don't, I think that the idea of 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 having less density as a criterion for describing this class is just contradictory to my normative commitments or even the law, right, because of community's interest or whatever. I can't resolve that. So 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 if 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 I have an issue that that we're, that's not worth considering, then then reject what I'm saying right now. But if, I I'm trying to find a way through here, which is not about a particular map, but it's about a principle that then would define a category.
What, what? I mean, as you can tell from my comments, I'm very skeptical about the the benefits and the viability of going that direction. But what are the possibilities of the commission asking for the assessment and the analysis and being able to look at how it plays out without committing to it ahead of time? And how long does it take?
No, we'll get this done in half an hour. Just the assessments of the of the density of the districts. And again, I would be doing it by by people per square mile per district. Now, the easy thing is that basically, since it's a congressional map, the number of people is equal, right? Because so so it's really just dividing it by the area, you know, and so, and so we do that. But but then, and then we look at the public plans, and we look at the, at the, the colored, you know, the the different team plans, yeah.
And and could we tell the city-county splits?
Yeah, then we, then we run it through that. Again, if you end up with a dense plan that, or not, you know, non-dense plan that then has a lot of county splits, you discount it.
Yeah.
Just like you've done others, you may verify why you did certain things and keep it.
Sure. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't see how I'll get into data. I'm, as I say, I remain skeptical about the use of the outcome, but.
In talking to Nate and to Moon, it sounds like this would be something I think would be good for the commission just to see. Again, it's not in the statute, so you can just immediately throw it out, but it'd be great if we could just take a few minutes and just consider, and we just apply it to these maps.
No, no, it's, well, it's all, it's the public maps too, right?
Yeah, so all the maps, and so I think we just.
But we knock out the ones that have a primarily urban district, right? Because the whole point here is that there's none, none of the ones that have a primarily urban district are gonna be, are gonna fit this category. Well, that's fine, I mean, then, you know.
No, I understand.
We wanted to show it to you, because I think.
No, I understand, of course. It's okay.
I would at least like to look at it, yes, very much so.
All right, and again, the 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 exercise here is to find the category of 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 plans that then that fit that. And then you say, you know what, none of them satisfy my commitments. So I don't know if that, I I wanna make sure everybody's on board with this before we actually do it, because once we do it, if there are surprises, you know. Yeah. Okay.
It's always good to do something fun. I'm just talking to Jeff personally, because he's kind of that kind of guy, and so.
So, yeah, help me on the timing of this. I mean, it is.
Well, no.
No. He said, he said.
Because what I wanna do is I wanna make sure we organize them according to density as well as the splits.
So I I guess my question is, is this an analysis for right now, or is this an analysis that should be presented to us on Saturday?
Yeah, no, we'll do, we'll do it now.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Yes, yes.
So. Let me ask you this other question. One of the things that bothers me about the topography of the state of Utah is the Colorado River. And I don't feel very comfortable about putting Moab and St. George in the same district because the the river, you just, it's it's distant. I think we have a natural flow of traffic from Highway 6 down through Price, down through Moab. We have 40 that goes out the basin. We have 89 down to Richfield and I-15 through St. George. So as you start talking about putting things together, I'd hate to have some wild map that ended up with Moab and St. George because of some measure being the same. I think practically, that's not.
Only if you look at these maps, so this criteria would just compare.
We're not creating them, but I I'm sure if I created the least dense map, I could do better than every one of the plans, right? That ends up being the thing that, because I don't think, I don't think anybody was trying to do that. Because partly because people might probably contradict the law, right, on community's interest and stuff like that. But but since I, this is, I'm just trying to figure a way to break the impasse here a little bit on on this category of plans, right? But I, but I wanna make sure I understand the the concern. And no one's committing to a plan by doing this, but it will, it will, give you one more. Okay, so should we, all right, why don't we take 15 minutes to start, and then I'll update you after 15 minutes?
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't bring trees to this, and that is a real oversight on my staff's job, because.
Well, I'll tell you what I want. I wanna go to my car and get some eyedrops. Well, at least 15.
Yes.
I don't know if it's just both, and then I'm gonna come back with this, get to the analysis and see if that changes anybody's minds. I don't hold it.
So, so she, Cassidy could probably.
Yeah.
Give the best.
Okay.
I think I'd like to see the data.
Right. No, but like, there's, there's. Oh, okay, okay. So what, which one, which one, so you've got two, two SHs and.
That may be, if we have to send somebody out for a drink run or something anyway.
We can go get you snacks.
Well, Karen did bring some chocolate that that may, it may cover us for a few minutes.
The time says there's a Walmart just barely around.
Well, I could use a Coke Zero, but I don't know if anybody else could use a beverage, you know, other than water, which I should. So we got a Diet Coke and some chips request.
So just to be clear, we took out the plans that fell into those other categories.
In this analysis. But now we're to build running off to just as we- So as we're waiting, blueberry or blackberry ginger, where to go? All right. Yeah, it's quite tasty. There's pump tree, there's caramel and sea salt, hazelnut toffee.
I'm gonna ask Moon, I know we have one more commissioner who's absent, but but as we're waiting for him, I I want to be clear that there are trade-offs, right? So so when we go in this direction, it may be that, you know, it it the the work isn't over. It still requires looking at each one of these plans with respect to county splits and all that other kind of stuff. And you may just decide that this is like not, you know, a trail worth walking down. Look, I want to make sure everybody's here for this.
Yes, we're waiting for Bill to come back.
And so actually, Moon, can you hear us?
Yep.
The 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 measure of density is is people per square mile or what is it?
So Tyler and I have been furiously like computing and recomputing while we're on break. So what what we have right now ready to go, let me show you what it what we can.
Well, but but don't put anything up on the screen yet.
Let's wait till Bill gets-
Just just what is the measure of density?
We're doing two things. One thing that we're doing is we're looking at the 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 density of the densest district compared to the least dense, and we're looking at the ratio of those two. That's that's already computed. And then the last thing, just pursuing the conversation that you just had, is to look at the average density of the four.
Yeah, let's let's just focus on the average that's I think because that's an easier thing for people to understand to start. We can do both. I'm sure that it's probably going to end up being about the same, but-
Yeah, I think it is. Tyler's still like confirming those figures. So I'm going to start with that ratio and then we'll go back and check that it's the same, that it gives the same order as the average.
And then I'm going to ask that we wait. If you if you haven't actually done the average, I mean, I-
We're we're almost there.
Okay, okay.
So I would say under five, under five more minutes.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Well, we got your attention here. What about your car warranty?
What is that?
Your car warranty. I will note that this is the first meeting that I've allowed to go past the three-hour limit. So thank you.
There's our, there's our audience.
Yeah, they've they've turned out just a little bit. So thank you to the diehards that are-
I think most of them are related to something.
The sad part about this is Soraya's gone, so you got my handwriting on this. So this is this is going to make this much more difficult.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Rex is what? Well, yes, but this is all Karen's contribution, so.
Oh, so it's Karen. You're the chocolate.
I do like chocolate.
The first time I walked in there, it was just kind of on a limb one afternoon. I hadn't seen it. I just happened to get lucky and the owner that I was there and he took me through tasting experience.
Try try their chocolate.
All right, but I think we can, we can start with that and then then we'll go.
Yeah, the market's interesting.
Okay, so she she's got, she's gonna present density in two ways. They're both related to people per square mile in a district. But it's, I have a hard question is like whether you're looking just at the average or are you looking at, say, the most dense over the least dense, right? As you try to think about it. And so she'll she'll present first, I think. Well, tell me, tell us what you're going to present first.
Sure, I will show you. First, I'll show you some pictures and then show you a statistic. And then as soon as possible, show you the other one. So you're seeing my screen, right, with this urban-rural score on it? Yeah, it looks like it. I can see it on on your projector screen in the in the Zoom. Okay, so these are four plans that came from, you know, the colored teams that are less balanced. And so I'm just showing you this first as a warm-up. So you can see here that there's there's urban districts and rural districts. You can see there's a difference visually in the picture. And in all of these, you know, there's a district that's less, that's got a lot less area than the others. This is visually, this one's the most balanced of these four. And so accordingly, here's the number that that we're calling the UR score. And what it means is just what's the biggest district? So in this case, it's the red. How much more area does that cover than the smallest district, which in this case is the pink? And here that ratio is 147. So I don't know if your eyeball would have guessed that, but the red district covers 147 as much acreage, 147 times as much acreage as the pink. So there's a big difference in like, you know, urbanity, if you will. Here, the ratio is 89. So the blue district here is 89 times as much area as the red. Here, the ratio is 71. Here, it's 27. And then we were, we we tallied this for the the more balanced of the colored plans, which are orange two and green one, compared to four plans that commission staff gave us from the public submissions. So SH2, DR, BD, and BOM, which is this Tyson Bomb stuff. I have the full name of the plan as I think it was submitted to to commission staff here in the sort of nickname down here. So you can see Bombsta, that ratio is 11 times. In BD, it's six times. The green one plan, it's nine times. Orange two, it's four times. And visually, I hope you see, as we're getting these ratios smaller, you can see that the districts look more even in size. And the very most-
Oh, yes.
I had just asked a question.
Go.
I'm so when a map is three times, what is, what's three, what is it three times?
Most, the three times is the best on the in terms of this.
In terms of-
That's criteria.
The highest, the largest district, the smallest district is least dense.
In in terms of people.
No, in term, yes, in terms of density, the density of the largest district is only three times more dense than the smallest district. Is that fair, Moon?
That's exactly right. So there's three times as many people per square mile.
If because you're trying to get, as I understand it, right? The concern here is to try to get balance or, you know, to make sure that four districts are relatively balanced between the urban and rural population, right? And so this gives you a sense of-
It's not 50/50.
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing. And then because here's the problem, right? You could do a few differences in districts, but then the, so the key here is that all four of them are, you know, have a large, that all four districts are have more density. And so you can see that there is only one, the top district is only three times as dense as the smallest. Has Tyler forgotten the other? And and when you do the average density, that might be easier for you to understand. This action's probably better statistic, but the average density.
Yeah, we'll we'll pull that up in a second, but I want to show you something else meanwhile, while he's finishing the numbers. And so but first visually, is this okay for for the folks on the commission? That you can see these all have- That you can see these all have about the same size? The biggest is three times as big as the smallest, which is the same thing as saying that the smallest has three times the density of the biggest. Because as they pointed out, they all have the same.
Let me just say, this is what some of the questions are concerned about. You don't like those districts. I understand that, but just so we understand what the category of plans might be. That's one that, that's the one that wins, at least on this criteria. We'll see if it does it on the average.
Oh, great. It's, it sounds like Tyler just finished those average numbers. Um, so let me just show you while we're, I'll maybe get Tyler to come on mic and tell you which, which one, if, if the order that they go in.
Should be the same.
Is the same, yeah, I expect it to be exactly the same. So we'll have, we'll have Tyler confirm that shortly. But while he's getting ready to do that, what I can do at the same time, since I, I got these plans earlier today, is I can show you how these plans compare on all the same nonpartisan criteria that we've been talking about all night. And then we'll confirm that the average density ordering is the same as the ratio ordering. But first, let's take a quick look at this. Let's look at county splits. So now what you're seeing is, so we have BOMSTA, that's, that was one of the plans that we saw. Reese, that's DR in your packet. So Reese's DR. BDK, that's, that's BD. Hepworth, that's SH2. And then green one and orange two, three are familiar. So if we look at split counties, DR looks great, only splits one county. Nice job, DR. Hepworth and so SH2 and BD, that's these two, they split just three counties. So that's, so those three plans from the public all split fewer counties than green one or orange two, three. Let's compare them on these other statistics that we've been looking at all evening. So county pieces. So here's county pieces, as, as expected, similar story. We saw that DR only split one county, but this is telling you it splits that one county into three pieces. That's how to read that. And BD and SH2 are tied again with seven county pieces. Here's the green one plan. And then here are BOMSTA and the orange two, three. Let's take a quick look at municipalities. So town splits, here we are. I'm sorry if I'm getting a little loopy, it's 1220 for me. So we have, okay, so this is, take it all get municipality integrity. We see that DR and SH2 are the strongest again, with BD just a little bit behind. This time, orange and green just have a few more municipality splits and BOMSTA bringing up the rear. And all of that is very much in line with the computer ensemble and the rest of the citizen ensemble. So that's town splits. Town pieces, we should expect to be very similar and it is. But this time Hepworth, so SH2 and, and DR are tied now. And let's take a look at compactness. Okay. So here's compactness compared to the rest of the citizen ensemble. And you can see that BD and SH2 are the best in compactness. So DR, which was our big winner at county and municipality integrity, isn't quite as compact as those two. BOMSTA and Green One, a little far, farther behind. And Orange Two, Three with a rather less compact than the others.
Great. So does Tyler have the average?
He does. And like a good, like a good mathematician, he just realized that the, yeah, that's totally true, Tyler. The great point from Tyler, which is that, so the districts all have the same population.
Right.
Area is, the, the, the average of the areas is just the sum of the areas over four.
Right.
Right, remember, just let's, I, I get to be a math.
That's the whole state.
Yeah, that's the whole state, the sum of the areas.
It'll always be the same.
So the, the average density is actually a constant across all districting plans. It was a great idea, but it turns out.
But, what, what, wait, why, why is that? The average.
Because the average, the average area is the sum of all four areas divided by four. But the sum of the areas of the districts is the area of the state. So every districting plan has the same average area as every other districting plan.
Right. So that's why the score is a better one.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so we can't do, right, so we can't do the average area per population, because that.
It's the, it's the average of the districts, each district. Each district, you do number of people per square mile in the district and then you average all four districts.
Yeah, there's, there's a funny, there's a funny, just like math observation here. So Tyler, we need to average the reciprocals to get something interesting.
Okay. Can do that.
Yeah.
So, but we, we know the, the density for each one of the districts and that would be different.
Yeah, so I just made the, the, the observation that if you do, if you, if you average the, the people per area, you will get something interesting, but if you average the, if you average the area per people, you won't. Sorry.
That's why we're doing people per area.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right. Just all we need is square miles per district.
Yep, Tyler, how's that going?
I'm, I'm almost there.
This is like, you know, I don't know, the, the.
Watching the lottery balls, you know.
It's like watching paint dry.
There's no pressure with you, you have people waiting on you, so.
Especially when she's back east and it's.
Okay, these are small numbers.
So Tyler, what we're looking for is confirmation. I'm going to read you back the order that these went in before. And I just would like confirmation that, that when you average those reciprocals, they're in the same order. So if you're ready, I'll read you the order.
No, I'm not ready. Some, something happened here, it's not. Yeah, okay, so go ahead.
Okay, so the SH2 should be the lowest or it should be more than.
Sorry, I don't know what SH2 is, I have the.
Yeah, that's Hepworth.
Don't know what that is either. I have, I have them sort of, I have them public zero, zero, one through 25. Oh, I think we had them, we, we did have a, we had a crosswalk for that.
Sorry, everyone, may, maybe you want to give us another minute to, to get this not on a live stream.
Okay, so was Hepworth? Twenty, okay. So what about Hepworth?
Yeah, Hepworth should be one of the extremes, is that right for you?
Tell me, are these ranges so far apart that something's really bad or are they?
That's what, that's what I, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, so, so.
Well, it seemed that there were a couple of outliers, though, that would we.
Yeah, right.
And I think that's the question that Lyle's asked overall.
Hepworth has the, the, the smallest mean of, of reciprocals.
Okay, great. And then on this list, the next one is David Reese, DR.
Okay, and DR is. He's oh nine, so he is. Yep, that's very close to Hepworth.
Next is Orange Two.
Yes.
Next is BDK or BD.
Which is. Yes.
And then comes Green One.
Yep.
And then the last in this list is BOMSTA.
Which is Pope twenty-four, yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, well, that was sensible. Okay, so the, the average density statistic orders things in the same order as looking at max overmen.
And they're interested in the, and justifiably so, in whether, you know, some of those can essentially be excluded because they're not, because they're off, you know, they're extreme. So, so we've established that SH or Hepworth is the best in terms of the density stuff. But like, what, what should, trying to help them exclude some of these.
On the grounds of density or on the grounds of the other?
Just give us the numbers, give us the numbers for all six of, for, for all of those, whatever, however you come up with the numbers.
So show us that chart again.
Sure, yeah, I will do that.
Yeah, I think the scores we gave before are a better way to look at them.
Yeah, these are in more interpretable units, I think. So three, four, four, six, nine, eleven. So if you're just, if it's, if it's a kind of.
So it seems like nine and eleven are a magnitude greater than, than the others.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely, they're outcompeted in terms of this evenness statistic by the others. And that was true whether you did it as a top to bottom ratio or whether you did it as average density. Those agreed that these four, orange two, DR, BD, and SH2, they, in this statistic, they outcompete Green One and BOMSTA, no matter whether you do it as top to bottom or average. And then if we go back, and, and by the way, and these are just way, way, way different than the rest of the colored team plans, where, where the ratio can get as high as 147. So just to say, this was already a contest among things with pretty good stats. And then just to sort of remind ourselves, we probably, on the grounds of these traditional principles, if we're looking for things that just equally well satisfy those, then Orange Two, Three is a little bit off in terms of compactness. It's a little bit outside the, the range of the rest of the others in terms of compactness. In county splits, also, it's, it's the kind of maybe least compelling in county splits with BOMSTA close behind. Same two in county pieces, of course. And for town splits, BOMSTA is also kind of a, a lot more splits than the others. So it seems to me just surveying these, that just on the grounds of the traditional principles, BOMSTA looks a little bit less competitive than the others. But see if you agree.
All right, I don't know, I don't know if that was helpful for you all. But, 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 you know, one thing is this, with the public plan, if, if you're trying to come up with this category, you can see what they look like. And then you can see how they fare. So the, the SH one is the one that's the least dense and most balanced. If that, if that's, and it's doing well on the municipality and the county split, it's compact and it's the most compact. So.
But one of the problems on the splits is when you see that's a problem, we could probably go back and correct any district that, that would, and, and correct that.
But again, it, it depends on, I'm trying to come up with some way to identify the balanced maps, right? And so the most balanced map is this SH two one, you know, that, that does that. It might be undesigned for other reasons, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's my problem. I mean, we, we've had a lot of discussion of districts with which people are familiar and counties and locations and so on. And I live in Salt Lake County. And Salt Lake County, I, I don't know, I have to go back and check, but I think in every single one of these maps, you'll find that Salt Lake County has been split into three separate districts.
I don't think that's true with SH two.
If that's not true with SH two, then.
Is, I do know if it is, is Salt Lake County split in three districts?
It, it, yes, it's in three.
Yeah, and there's no necessity to split Salt Lake County. And the major impact is to dilute the influence of the voters who live in Salt Lake County. And if. And, you know. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I've got as much evidence as you do.
I want to.
I've lived there for 50 years.
I want to respond to this. My biggest concern 10 years ago, when they did the redistricting, and I was not a member, that I was really concerned that all four legislators would be elected from the urban areas. And they all were. You know, John Curtis, Virgil Saons now, Stewart and Moore. Moore, I guess, moved out of Sandy up into Park City because of his child. But all four of them are from, from, from that area. Now, I was concerned because Salt Lake has the money, Salt Lake has the television, Salt Lake has the publicity. I was, and I, I was right, all four of them come from urban, urban areas. And so when somebody says, well, I don't want rural telling me what to do, holy cow. If Salt Lake with 600,000 or with 500,000 can't elect a representative, that's not really my fault.
Well, fine, you can split it in two, but why do you have to split it in three?
Okay. Well, look, I, I mean, maybe, I, I don't know whether this was helpful or not, but I, I was trying to figure out a way.
Well, it's educational.
Yeah.
And it may be some of those districts may be easier to fix. You know, sometimes you see that deviation of splits by thousands and sometimes tens of thousands.
So one of the things that, that I've heard as people have been talking is, I, I've heard, you know, Rob, for example, said, as long as I had my urban rural split, then I could support the other plans that, that weren't that. I haven't necessarily heard that, that from other folks, that if they had Salt Lake in two, that they'd be willing to support, you know, something else. Is, is that, I mean, is, is there a compromise in there that we could, you know, have one of each of those plans and then one of something else? I, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
The only thing I, that I don't like about that is that I want to see how all the support for all the maps stacks up. I'm not adverse to, after having done that, seeing what, you know, what gets, what are top vote getters and so on, seeing whether we want to design our presentation. What I object to is being committed to vote for something that I'm not going to be able to support. Or that I don't want to support ahead of time. I'm entitled to look as a member of the commission. I'm entitled to look at each of the maps and vote on them.
So the, it, in part, what I'm hearing is if we had a vote similar to what we have done on all the others, where we could vote for whatever three we prefer, that, that would allow us to have a further conversation. That could be more productive.
Sure, I'd be very. Yes, exactly, it takes a lot of things off the table.
I'm not fully understanding the split process, I'm hesitant to, to dive into it. We have another meeting in a couple of days, maybe we can pick up this categorizing at that time. But I am getting to the point where I think it's time to, to throw our three votes out. And I'll start my cleanup process.
We got a chance.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't want to put Moon through that. For staff.
Get the feel for what the commission.
Jeff, since you said that, let's get this show on the road. You want to go first?
My first vote, purple. Purple four point three.
The three that, that, just like we have in the other.
The three that that, just like we have in the other?
The three package you want or the three that we like best?
I think the three that we like best, and and then we'll have a conversation if.
Second, the Stuart Hefner Compact Congressional. And the SF Public.
SF.
Now we might be reading.
You burned them.
I think there's a.
Okay, mine are also purple four point three. The S H S H Compact Congressional and the E W Public Congressional.
I'm going to sign off for the night, folks. Happy to ride anything tomorrow in the bright light of day.
Go ahead.
Thanks for being in tomorrow.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes.
Yes, the compact, not. No. Yes.
Yes.
Bill has a purple four, orange three, and C V. I'm beginning to find that. So I'll go ahead and go. So purple, orange three, and then I'll throw the mixed compact. Yes.
Can you vote? Explain your vote?
Yes.
I would pick orange two-three. Now, there's orange three and there's orange two-three. The two-three is the one I did that has Weaver County as a base, doesn't split it. Davis County is a base. And the Weaver, the number one includes all of northern Utah, all of the basin, all the way down to landing. I know that's a big district. As I've explained, Utah State.
That's the Utah State District.
That's that's their area. And they have people working on the environmental issues and all of that there. But the part of Salt Lake I took and put in that because I needed numbers. I took the area that's associated with Alpha and Sandy, that that area of the ski area that ties in. I think that ties in with Park City and that area. That's why that part of Salt Lake County went up there because I think that ties a common interest of Alpha and that ski area. That's my number one. Number two, I took the C V Public Congressional, but it bothered me the deviation was so high. And also, the four has no rural to it, but I I thought that made some sense. And then my third one would be S H Mixed Compact. But again, it had Salt Lake City with some pretty powerful areas in there, but I thought that's that's more of the one that I think gives a balance of different approaches we've taken to it, and that that's my three.
Welcome next. So purple or three. I'll do the S H Compact Congressional and the orange Congressional three-three.
I should just add, I'm going to have a hard time voting for any district that puts all the South together. I think that's indicated you created too big of a district for one person, one legislator and staff to service it. That's stopping that has to be divided, in my view.
I would just note on three point three, one of the concerns I have is that there's a three-way split in Davis, split in Salt Lake County, and a three-way split in maybe because of county. And then the three-way split in Cottonwood Heights, which struck me as just very strange.
Oh, that was on orange three-three. That's right. Okay, I need to change my one on that.
So Rob?
So I'm the last one to go?
Yep.
Like what we are doing is coming up with all of the same type of maps, which is, I'm sorry, totally unacceptable. One of the things that we also in the law had to to take as much as practical is the core of existing districts, which none of these maps up here actually coming close to doing the core of existing districts. The deviation on many of the ones that are down there submitted by the public are unacceptable. They will saw a loss. I'm sorry, the green map is the one that has the deviations right. It has the urban rural split correct. It has the four that is there. I'm sorry, if that is not one of the options that we're giving to the legislature, this commission has failed its job and responsibility.
Well, aren't you going to vote for it? I mean, we have very different views of the.
We have very. And I'm sorry, I don't care. This is what we have to do. If we do not come up with a package that this commission can do, then I'll simply, what do you want me to do? Would you like me just to resign now and go back and say what I really want to think? I'm sorry, there is, there are maps in here. I'm sorry, four point three destroys the the concept of urban and rural altogether. That goes back to what we did from nineteen nineteen eighty to two thousand, and there was a specific reason why the state of Utah left that philosophy. And that philosophy hasn't changed. And there is a specific reason why we have urban and rural since two thousand, and that philosophy hasn't changed. And the ability of actually going to these areas, I actually like Lios Orange. And I understand his rationale for it with Utah State, but you've also got me going from Grouse Creek to Manila to Brandy. You only need Mayo in there to get to it that the quadruplets is there. So I'm sorry. This may be preliminary, but if this is the way we're going, once again, there is no reason for going further.
So but I I would argue, Rob, that the S H Mix Plan, if, for example, has an urban rural split.
Which one?
The S H Mix Compact has an urban rural split.
And it has a deviation, but it has other problems that go along with it. I'm sorry. You're going down a path, perhaps in June, we should have had this type of discussion going over what our priorities were. But this is going down the path of making this easily a worthless experience when we take it to the legislature.
On this split, Utah County.
But the 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 commission wasn't established to do the legislature's work for. It was established to respond to a perception amongst a significant portion, in fact, the majority of the public, that redistricting, as it has been done, should be changed in its methodology. And, you know, the question for districts, that may very well be one of the things that the original proposition, at least, was designed to take another look at, not repeating the way things have been done.
I'm sorry, if somebody came before you as a judge and said, I didn't follow that law because I didn't want to, that's not a very viable position. That is one of the responsibilities. It is one of the responsibilities in the law that we should take into account. And in none of these are we even going into that.
But we don't prioritize it over everything else.
You should at least take it into account.
Well.
And as far as, I'm sorry, if we're going to go with this approach, you're going to have three of the same maps going to the legislature. They're not going to be different. They're not going to be respected.
We haven't finished our discussion. We're taking the votes on the first round to see which maps surface.
Let me throw out an idea.
This discussion.
So so some of these, like Commissioner Baker's, for sure, Bishop Bishop said, you know, has some deviation issues. We've, I think the commission, all of you have kind of agreed, particularly congressional maps need to be down in the low single digits. It just has to be. And 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 so maybe taking tomorrow and this weekend, not taking a few of these maps and seeing if we can get some of the deviations and get to a rural urban, something that may be workable. I I don't know, or clean change, making some changes. I don't know. That may be an option. These ones that all got votes, we sit down and wrestle with. I don't I don't know. That's that's a thought. Phil?
We took a vote on the three that each of us likes best.
Yes.
I would suggest we take a vote on one from each category and put that up there and see if we can come to some agreement about that.
And so what what would be the categories?
Rural, rural, mix, one urban district, two urban districts.
So which ones would be on the list of the first?
So the the rural urban mix ones?
Those are the ones that Moon was evaluating.
Yeah.
And that's the complete list?
Yes.
Yeah. Of the of the rural urban mix, right?
Now, again, some of them, there's a spectrum, right? So so some of them are more and some of them less, so. I think you should only think of the ones who are in single digits, you know.
Sure. No, I understand. And I'm left with the difficulty of splitting Salt Lake County three ways in all of it.
That may be something that could be wrestled with.
Well, that's that's it. I haven't heard anybody offer to take a look at redoing one of those urban rural mixes and leave Salt Lake County in two pieces instead of three. Because that that would solve my problem. Somebody wants to try it.
Part of the difficulty there is once you do that, then it may end up being two deaths, right? Those two districts that would then share Salt Lake County. I think they tried this and it's not going to work.
Yeah.
I don't know what that's true. I don't know if we at least take a vote and see if we can come up with an agreement that this is a package we could send to the legislature.
Okay. So we we have a proposal to to vote on a map that has a single urban core, a map that has two urban cores, and a map that has a rural urban district. So I I guess I'm trying to figure out the 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 way to structure that vote. Do we want to have a vote that says we want to look at those three? Or do we want to just say, let's have a vote on the
Each category.
Each category? Okay, so so if we do each category, I would suggest we go one, two, and and rural urban. Does that make sense? Okay. So if we were to choose among the maps that have a single urban core, which one would you prefer?
Which ones are those?
And and, yeah, therein lies the next question, right? So single urban cores. That would be the C V Public. I don't know. If what's your perception on the J E Public? That be a single urban core or is that? The O M Public? S F Public.
The S F Mixed Compact Public.
No, S F.
Give me those again with your tracks.
So.
That's got very high deviations.
So the C V. Well, I think that's one of the challenges with the the single compact districts is that they do have some higher deviation, which I I know there there are some very legitimate issues with.
I guess if if you want to zero out, if you say make it all, if any of these maps can meet perfect population quality, even if they have three hundred persons deviation, you can do that. And so if you want to make the sort of contingent on us just going in, it'll change it a little bit, but on the density stuff, it shouldn't change it much.
So the E W is also, well, a-again, I, yeah.
I need to ask a question.
Yes.
Are we scrubbing out the vote we just took and replacing it with a new approach here? Which I have to honestly say, I don't understand this approach.
Well, I I think the challenge is trying to get us to a place where we can have a set of maps that we can take together as a commission. We we have had some folks take some strong positions on on both sides, and and I it's I I'm trying to hope that we can find some some way to to act as a commission.
But we always act as a commission. I mean, when I sat on a five-member court and then three of us voted, that was the core action. I'm wondering if if we do need to, you know, back off and think more creatively about how to approach this and do it tomorrow, but that's just a suggestion. I mean, I am I am just as uncomfortable as in being forced to vote for a category to which I am opposed, as as I think.
Rob is, yeah.
I'm feeling like it's both literally and figuratively in eleventh hour vote. The doors are closed. They're not closed, but you know what I'm you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I don't understand this process. I don't want to proceed.
Chair face or climbing?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion that that you'll all hate anyway? But we're going down a certain path. And what Judge Thorne was talking about is simply coming up with some alternatives to get to the legislature. And what some of you want is a is an urban district. And I would suggest that orange three has two urban districts in it. The purple four has two very urban districts in it, and the the green one is still the one that does the best kind of splitting of urban and rural. I suggest that we give those three, if you want to make some adjustments to them, the orange three, the purple four, and the green one, and it's the three that will take towards the legislature.
But orange three splits Salt Lake County into three pieces. And I'm not satisfied with that. I don't want to vote for that.
We've heard from many, and we heard from a mayor tonight who had the support of a dozen other mayors in the area for that very reason.
I'm sorry, but if you don't split it three ways, well, if you have, if you want to give them an urban, a rural district, an urban district, then I don't care. Then give them a let me do the purple, the green, and you pick another one that just gives an urban district by itself. Those are the options. And I'm willing to be more than happy to walk with you in supporting something that gives two urban options to the legislature, as long as you can have an urban rural split to the legislature as well.
Can we get an urban rural split that doesn't put Salt Lake County into three pieces?
Because if you put Salt Lake County into two districts, one of them has to be urban, totally urban. There is no other way you're going to draw it. You know that. Because if you put Salt Lake County into two districts, one of them has to be urban, totally urban. There is no other way you're going to draw it. You know that.
Well, if you split it exactly in half, you've got six hundred, you know, thousand, you've still got room to pick up two hundred thousand somewhere.
But you look at the, where the, the numbers are going, the directions you have to go, you're not going to make that. And I don't have a problem if you want to give them two rural districts. And if one of those happens to have Salt Lake County with only one split, fine. Make that as one of the options. If you make the other one also available. And if you're not willing to make the other one available as an option, then we're going to be at some kind of impasse.
You talk about our having to be willing as if it were our job. To provide something we think the legislature will like. And. I, I think that, that's pretty close to the way you see our work here. And it isn't the way I see our work here. We were an independent commission that came about by virtue of a lot of the people.
That's, that's true. Thanks to the circumstances of the time, but the bottom line is still, we are going to give three maps to the legislature. Now, I'm sorry, if all three maps have to go down the same path, then have to be unified. And I'm sorry, I am not going to go with that way. I am not going to go against the history of what takes place. And I'm not going to go against what I know happens in Washington. And that's the bottom line. So if you don't want, if you are so entrenched. That you have to have Salt Lake County looking your way, then we have as, as we are in a problem. Go ahead and make a majority vote and, but I will certainly not support that either publicly or within the committee.
For example, on what happens in Washington. But there are others, both on the commission and who know others who have been in Washington. And have very different views about what goes on there. And I, I'm, I'm a little. I don't understand why it has to be your way or the highway. You've got a whole commission you're working with.
Like I've told you, there's a way of making a compromise in here that's not my way or the highway. If it was my way in the highway, we do green and forget everything else. But there is a possibility of here of giving three maps that will make everyone on this commission satisfied in some particular way. Or you can force this with.
Do you know that? We haven't voted on that.
You know it as well as I know it.
No one.
Rex.
Commissioner Hill? Can I get in this debate?
If you dare.
No, I dare. I guess my problem is, I sat here tonight, I heard city officials, city officials say, well, we want our dish city together. Don't you share anybody else. Like, holy cow, you're all together. We're all Salt Lake County. Why, why are you worried about how you're dividing it back and forth? And so we're all different and all sharing all that. I could just tell you, I learned very quickly in the legislature, there's three words, Salt Lake City, Salt Lake County and the rest of the world. And if you bring this bill up to the legislature, all you have is the same choices. They're going to say, that commission is controlled by Salt Lake County. Has nothing to do with rural, urban. It's Salt Lake County. We ought to protect Salt Lake County. And you watch what happens with the bill. We'd waste their time. And I think, I mean, this one bill splits Utah County in half. I suspect that my friends in Utah County are not going very, very happy about that, that we protect Salt Lake County, but not.
We're not protecting Salt Lake County. If we only cut Salt Lake in half, nobody would complain.
I'm just telling, Salt Lake County cut in half, it's still controlled, two districts. Five hundred and fifty each, but easily controlled, each legislative district. So I, you know, I guess I live in a world of compromise. I've learned that. I look at Washington and I just shake my head. Because those guys have never learned how to compromise. The ones that are now entrenched. I could be just like Rob Bishop. I could vote no if you don't put up anything that gives a rural mix. So we walk out of here and. And the legislature is going to look at the division and say. They went there, Commissioner Thorn.
In an attempt to, to build on Rob's attempt to compromise. Suppose we do green, we do purple and we create a district. A map that has Salt Lake entirely in one district. And then the, the rest goes elsewhere. So there's an old Salt Lake County district.
Why, why green? I mean, green was designed by us at the very beginning. Before we had any public hearings, heard any public response. And two members of the three-person green committee. Did not want it brought before. It was Rob who wanted it and that's fine, but, but. Why would I? And he still does. And I still don't. And I, I think Jeff still doesn't. So I don't understand how green arises to the top. And you know, each one of us only has one vote. And. The. I'm not sure that compromise is the only way that we can proceed. We can proceed by a vote and see where people's. Inclinations are. And you know, if I get outvoted on the issues that I care about, that's wrong.
Please, Commissioner Hill. I was just going to ask if our legal counsel could just review for us. The votes that need to be had to present the maps. To the legislature.
Sure. So in the statutes. Outlines how the map should be. Sent to the legislature. And it says, to the extent possible, each map recommended by the commission shall be approved by at least five members of the commission. And so. Then if the commission is unable to obtain the approval of at least five members for all maps. Then it provides a process whereby maps could be put forth short of the five votes. And do you want me to walk through all of that as well or?
Not that.
Karen, was that? Any other questions on that process?
So I'm, I, I'm wondering, and you know, some of this is the, you know, late hours that. My colleague, Commissioner Baker has noted. I, I do wonder if there might be some value in kind of sleeping on this, so to speak. In, in thinking about. You know, you know. And, and some of it's just for, for me to try and process how we want to proceed in a way that's going to be productive for us. As a commission. I know from, from the outset, you know. My goal has been to have, you know. You know, consensus. It, it may not be possible that we get consensus on, on every map. And what, what I would hope. Is that we can find a way to, to have. You know. It, well, we, we obviously have to pass it with the majority. You know, that's the other alternative. And it has to be, it makes sure it's an independent. There, there are nuances there. But I would still rather have, you know, I, I don't want to put us in a position where we have somebody that on every one of the maps. Is essentially feels the need to. To, to be a holdout. Yeah. Now, if it were, you know, six, in, in one, I might feel different, but I'm hearing that there are at least two that, that you have some. Hesitancy about not having a, an urban rural, you know, kind, kind of mixed in the mix. And, and so, you know, maybe some of you can help me think about how to. To structure this in, in a way that we can get to a, you know. Whether it's, it, whether it's a compromise or, or whether it's a, a voting process that. That allows us to feel that we have the integrity to. That, you know, to, to vote the, the way that will allow us to move forward. So any, any thoughts at this moment? Then I, I would suggest that we have a motion to adjourn and that on Saturday's agenda, we. Come back to the congressional maps. And. Hopefully we can find a way. You know, a, a way forward.
Motion to adjourn.
This, this meeting is here for adjournment. I was worried that nobody was going to adjourn us.
Tomorrow morning, we meet at eleven o'clock at West Valley.
That's Saturday.
Saturday. That's right. Saturday at eleven o'clock, do we want to meet before then or just plan on meeting after then?
I'm.
Well, I think we have to do it during our public meetings.
Well, yeah, we, we would do it during our public. Forward. So I'd rather, I'd rather do it. After we hear the public comment. And, you know. Maybe this will engender more, you know, public comment on, you know, some of these issues for us as well. Drive safely.
I, I would.
And don't get a ticket man away.
No, I won't. I think it may be helpful, Gordon, for staff to look at these and see if they could categorize those into the one district, two districts and the rural.
So I'm going to talk with.
Professor Persley?
Persley and. And we're going to make a chart to show everything you've seen tonight, kind of laid out with each of you. So.
So.
I thought it should be was helpful, but I want you to.
So can you, also, you know, I, I know Cassidy at one point gave us some course of prior districts data.
Yeah, we have all that.
You know, so, so all of those data points that we've gotten would be helpful for this. For all of the congressional.
Cores, county splits, city, city splits, compactness.
Categories, categories.
Just do density, so then you can, you can even see it yourself.
If we can define the categories, I'll. I'm going to take forward whichever.
We'll just do the density of all of them and then you can split them, you know. Right, right, the bottom, well, you know, if they have. I'll, I'll help you out.
But it was one very complex.